Good evening, welcome everybody. Today is Wednesday, September 7th, and this is a workshop of the Scarborough Town Council. We're here to, for two purposes, to review the annual report for Scarborough Downs, and also to review a GMO exemption that they are proposing. I'll call this meeting to order and recognize that we have a full slate of councilors with the exception of Councilor Johnson, who is unavailable for the workshop today. With that, we're going to start, there's two pieces to this, and it's dictated largely by the CEA. The first piece is a town presentation from our perspective of how the project has been progressing. Town manager is going to come to the podium and present his piece of the pie. We'll open it up to questions for the town, and then the developer will come up and present their side, and we'll have questions available for the developer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're gathered here this evening, this afternoon, I guess, to do the annual progress report. Just by way of background, this was a part of the credit enhancement agreement. The town and the developer both share some responsibilities in providing these annual reports. Initially, we had thought that these reports would occur by the end of March. And after the first year, then we realized it would really make more sense to wait for the assessor to finalize commitments. We could actually talk about in capture a whole other year, basically, in this conversation. So that's what we've done, we did last year, and this will be the third, the actual fourth year of the project of the third year of report. So with that, I'll jump right into our side of the presentation. Again, as I referenced, this is part of the credit enhancement agreement. Technically, it's referred to under section 8.13, I believe. And the town is responsible to report on assessed value, permits issued, zoning amendments, and then town initiatives to help promote particularly the non-residential development side of the project. In addition, we have added a couple of other items that you might find interesting regarding property tax revenues and reimbursements to developers. And forgive me, some of the information will be redundant with the developer, but we want to make sure we're thorough in completing our side of the requirements. Next, please. So first, let's jump right into it. For year four, we're reporting on the value and revenues. You'll see the original assessed value of the Downs project was just over 7.2 million. And since then, and this is cumulative, they've added value of about 123,000 and change, some significant change, I should say. So the total value of the project now is just over 130 million. That 123 is the increment, and that's the subject of the reimbursement, subject to the credit enhancement agreement. Down below, we were reporting out the real estate property tax revenues collected on that value. And you'll see just under $2 million has been collected, and there's about 111 million, excuse me, 111,000, based on that original assessed value of 7.2 million. So we're just over $2 million in real estate tax revenues through year four. I should note that these are all based on values as of April 1st, 2022. So these are values that the assessor has just committed, and tax bills will be going out by the end of the week. So what you're hearing tonight, at least from our side, includes anticipated tax revenues throughout this year. And it's worth noting, you know, the way the reimbursement works, it's reimbursed only on taxes paid, and many of these taxpayers are other than the developer, and some are not paying exactly on time, most, the vast, vast majority do. But our assumptions are that all taxes levied will be paid and therefore reimbursed. Next, please. So here, we're looking at year-over-year increased value created. This is just a further breakdown. You'll see in year one, a little over 10 million. Year two, almost 29 million. Year three, just about the same amount. And then this year, really is the banner year so far, is over 57 and a half million this year alone. And that adds up to that total cumulative value of 123,500. Next. So just to remind the council and perhaps the members of the public, I believe earlier this year or late last year, the council chose to amend the downtown TIF and for our own purposes, to increase the capture rate. For the first three years, essentially, the capture rate was 43% in total, 40 going to the developer in three for town purposes. And we increased the town's percentage from that 3% to a full 60%. So now we're capturing 100% of the value within the downtown district. Yeah, so I guess I just really wanted to highlight that point. I feel like I'm missing a point to make on this sheet, but it escapes me. I'm sure you'll remember it and ask me in questions after. Next, we'll look at reimbursements through the CEA. Interestingly, in years one through three, we reimbursed just over $700,000 in taxes, again, subject to the requirements of the CEA. And then year four alone, we exceeded that, just in that year of 760,000. Again, it's the same 40%, but obviously value is increasing considerably. And so the sum of all years is about 1.461 million in reimbursed, again, subject to the terms of the CEA. As I said earlier, this assumes all taxes will be paid in the current year. Next, please. So we're looking at the revenue split of taxes from increased assessed value over the four-year period. This is a cumulative total. Again, you'll see that same number of 1.4 million to Crossroads. The town has retained about 2.1 million. Again, for the first three years, that was the 3%, and then it significantly increased in the current year. As an aside, we are covering operational expenses such as Sedco operational costs, and also half the public safety billing debt in the current year's budget using TIF revenues. So that's been fortuitous for us and an opportunity to offset some existing expenses using TIF funds. Next, please. So a little detail of terms of what's actually completed on the ground. I will just give a kind of a footnote here. It gets a bit confusing. The assessor lives in a world starting April 1st of every year, whereas the planning department tracks things a little differently on a fiscal year basis. And so we've tried to be careful, but it gets confusing at times. So I do have staff here that can assist me if I get into trouble or you have questions. So completing housing units by type. In total, we're looking at the completed units of 314, and that is broken down by 55, single-family, 102 condos, 145 apartments, and 12 assisted living units. I'll say these are completed and fully taxable. We assume they're occupied, but we don't have any way to verify that. But they're at full value and completed from our perspective. Under construction is the next slide. So there are a total of 100 units in various stages of construction. So of that 100, there's seven single-family, 54 condos, 39 apartments, and no assisted living currently. So if you add the under-construction and the completed units, there's 414 units in either, again, completed or under-construction. Next, please. Specifically in year four, and this is, I should say, I'm segueing to the non-residential square footage. So there's over 470,000 square feet of completed space and another almost 40,000 square feet under construction. Again, this is non-residential, so over 500,000 square feet in total. Next. Permits, FY22 housing units. So there are 10 total single-family units permitted for construction, of which there are 10 growth permits issued. And right now, if we were occupied, so that would need seven of those 10 are under construction. 102 multifamily units permitted for construction. Obviously, 102 growth permits have been issued. Approved by the planning board, but not yet permitted. 145 senior units and 36 apartments. Predominantly, I believe that's the, that's the Redeco project, I believe. I'll be corrected if I misstated that. And under review by planning board are eight small lots, so-called tiny homes. This was, I think, first heard by the planning board at their last meeting, so it's still very much in process, but off the ground. Next. So permits in FY22 for non-residential square footage, permitted for construction, just about 160,000 square feet in the Innovation District. Then for approved, not yet permitted, also in innovation, is just over 23,000 square feet. And then there are the Hackamore Place Apartments and American House at the Downs, which I believe is the Redeco site. Under the CEA terms, those projects, those are considered non-residential for CEA reporting purposes and performance standards. And lastly, under review by the planning board, it's actually approved now, as the parenthetical note says, is the Costco project, 161,000 square feet of retail space. Next. And this is just a quick overview. I don't know particularly the details of all of these, but these are permitted projects that are approved or under review in FY22. Just to put some square footage, the warehouse office is about 7,500 square feet, I believe. The Rottle Grudge addition is about the same size. IDEX is of 114,000 square feet of manufacturing and office space. Shucks Lobsters, about just over 13,000 square feet. HRF Holdings, 10,000 square feet, and Costco, as we mentioned, 161. DPR is a contractor space, storage and office, about 30,000 square feet. Front-runner park condos, I think the developer may speak to. American House is that Redeco project that is readying the site for development. Hackmore Place Apartments, and as I mentioned, the tiny lot subdivision, that's eight single-family homes. Zoning amendments, there have been none. And lastly, initiatives, or not lastly, but initiatives to promote non-residential development. Karen and her staff, and certainly planning staff as well, are providing general support and referrals to the project. We're featuring the Downs in our annual ongoing ads in the New England Real Estate Journal. And we've provided technical support to the various ad hoc committees that have supported, that are affiliated and related to this project. Staff does weekly and bi-monthly onsite meetings with the construction team. The town engineer is intimately involved in the project. As the council's aware, you have a council liaison that's met consistently with the development team as well. And then there have been ongoing discussions for approaching year now relating to the growth management ordinance and how it relates to the project. Next. School enrollment, as of now, and this is information from last week from the school department, there are 30 students as of August 31st. I think they're still taking fall registration, so that may change slightly, and we can update you as needed. Just for reference, I believe this time last year, we had 27 students. And you'll see the breakdown, two are from apartments, 22 from single-family homes, eight are from condos to make up the full 30. As an aside, our original forecast for the end of year four had 65 students. So at this point, it's trending lower than was originally forecast. Another interesting note that you might find helpful, Councilor Hamill had inquired about school impact fees. This project does pay those. They've paid about $695,000 in school impact fees to date. And this is where I'm going to get off the rails, perhaps, Karen. Next slide, population estimates. So we don't have an exact way of estimating population. So Karen uses multiple methods, using kind of presenting a range based on the different methodologies. So based on the 314 units that are constructed as of April 1st, we estimate that there's a range between 561 and and 659 residents. And if you care no more, Karen can certainly fill you in on those different approaches and how the brackets are established, but they're using certainly census data. And clearly, they're based on the type of units that actually exist in the field. Next, and that's it. So with that, I'd like to, I should mention, we do have a formal report. We've prepared that. The information that I've gone through here is contained within that report. We do that really to make sure that we're meeting the CEA obligations, that we have a report on record, if you will. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the developer and have their presentation.
We do that. Any questions for Tom?
What was that number again, in terms of impact fees?
695,000. And some more, if I can get the exact number, 695, 840. And I'm working on providing you the detail in support of that, but I happened to find that today, and I thought that would be helpful. John?
This might be a question that maybe Nick can answer, and it might even be your assessor report. But I'm just curious, since the inception of this project, have we started to see an impact, if at all, to the percentage of our taxes that are collected that are commercial versus residential? Or is it still pretty consistent?
I can certainly speak to that more in the assessment report, which is part of the council meeting tonight. The percentage of commercial valuation down versus presidential, having three year-over-year, three years straight.
And that's in the agenda packet as well, and the assessor's tax commitment report. And I would assume that that's helped along by the Innovation District, let alone the apartment buildings, which are also considered commercial. So would you say that's been a significant contribution to that shift? Yes. Thank you. Any other questions?
I had one more, and it's sort of an open-ended one, but I had difficulty trying to normalize some of the unit numbers that were given in square footage versus number of units. And I'm also interested in the number of units that we don't permit. You know, the ones that, you know, affordable senior, you know, workforce. So at some point, I'd like us to have a total, total number of the units, so we know, you know, the ones that are covered by permits, but also what the total number is. Because I think that number is understated in terms of how we're reporting it, the total number of units.
I believe all units are included in that number, right? Affordable units are included.
I think, I don't know if it was part of the assessing report or the planning one, but I think there was a time for total. But we could reference a page of the report if you want to.
Yes, I believe we're reporting all units that exist, regardless of whether they require a go-to-stroke from it or not.
So, but I'm focused, I think really what I'm focused on is the ones that are in the commercial areas in the Downs that have different names, but they're counted as as non-residential. And there were, help me with the names here, I can't think of them, but there was.
You're talking about generally about multifamily units that are for assessing purposes and CEA purposes, considered non-residential.
Right, but they're actually units, and in terms of, you know.
And I mean, and my numbers I presented tonight include those, Don. So the 314 that exist and the 100 under construction include all units.
Well, it might be confusing, they're also going to be included in the commercial square footage totals that you see.
Yes.
We can speak to that, too. Yeah, we have someone, we might bring, we'll clarify that. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Kind of a follow-up. For the last page, we got a population estimates based off of 314 units constructed as of April 1st, 2022. Then you have your population range, and this is original estimate for year four. So from what I gathered, we have 100 units that are currently under construction and expected to be completed by the end of the year. Yes, correct. So that would be 414 residential units by the end of the year. Is that what you use for the end of year four?
No. Sorry, we use the assessing, use the assessing numbers, because those were built and on the ground. So, because even if something is permitted, it may be six months before it's actually constructed and able to be occupied.
Okay, so would it be fair to say, though, when you have this original estimate for year four, and it was originally 351 units, 682 people, based off of the 314 already constructed and what your population counts? Is it fair to say that we're going to have more units and more people by the end of year four?
Yes. Good, thank you very much. We're certainly available if things come along.
Thank you, Tom. Now, Dan Bacon's going to come up.
Good evening, Dan Bacon, the Development Director for the Downs and Crossroads Holdings. As Tom indicated, the town has a set of criteria requirements to present in the annual report, and we have a separate one. So I'm going to walk through and try not to be too redundant and focus on the developers' requirements. If you don't mind going to the next slide. So real quickly, this is our overview. This is what we report on an annual basis per the CEA requirements. We also provide a non-residential status. Ours is a little bit different, because we have forward-looking projections. We report on also things that are permitted and improved, and we calculate those into our square footages, and I can speak to that in a minute. We also report on infrastructure, what's underway, both onsite, but also significantly this year, what's offsite in terms of traffic improvements. We report on restrictions that we see that are kind of headwinds in terms of continuing to meet our CEA agreement and forecast. We report on our outlook for this coming year and a few years down the road, and also on our work with town committees. That's been a key component on our last couple of years, with the downtown committee and community center committee, and probably in the future, potentially with a school committee. And then we'll wrap up, and Peter's going to provide some conclusions. Go to the next two slides. These are the requirements. I really boiled them down in our overview, so to kind of stay on our timeline, why don't you jump to the next one? So non-residential status. And Tom already walked through a lot of the same information. Ours is a little bit different, because we're reporting to you as of August versus the assessors in April. And I think we've set that trend over past reports where we're a little bit different, showing more activity, because a fair amount's happened, actually, since April in terms of new construction starts. So what was shown in Tom's report as maybe permitted or approved is now slid up into under-construction. And then we've actually added some permitted and approved that weren't reported on by the assessor. So the highlight here is that with this activity, as of last month, a few days ago, we're projecting next year to really meet that kind of million mark in terms of total non-residential square footage. And that's really been helped along by some key projects. The IDEX project that has started construction, I think as of April, it was still earthwork, for example. This Costco project getting approved, and a handful of other non-residential projects that Tom's already alluded to, many of them. Also up here on our pie chart shows really the split of different types of non-residential. There's a question Councilor Hamill asked about kind of multifamily rental, for example. And this shows from a square footage basis that that's 14% of our non-residential total, when the light industrial type uses is 45%. Commercial, especially with Costco coming onto the list, jumps up to 22%. And then the balance is that kind of senior assisted and care. So I think this helps kind of illustrate that mix and, and to the point by the assessor, the change overall in the town's kind of increase in allocation from a tax-based standpoint towards commercial. I think you can jump to the next slide. So this is just in table form, that same information, and it shows you the different types of non-residential development and where they stand in terms of stage, you know, completion, under-construction, approved, or in permitting. And again, what that confirms is there's been a heavy focus, obviously, with Innovation District on commercial, light industrial, senior. And so we're projecting next year, when Nick does his work, that, you know, we'll be meeting that 900K mark, that goal, that town goal. Even if you don't count that 14% of multifamily, just based on the heavy load of light industrial and commercial. And go to the next one. So in terms of infrastructure, and there's a lot of words up here, but this is really just the introduction to our assessment. And what Crossroads has been doing is, I think, as the council's aware, this is a longer-term master plan project where we're sizing infrastructure. We're going through permitting, that's not just for the next site or next year. It's for the long term. So we have a lot of permitting obligations through the town, also through DOT, through the public utility companies, sizing our infrastructure for the next phase, you know. And for us, our next phase is, for us, the town center is really kind of that key. And we have a lot of permitting requirements to kind of complete streets and do grid layouts and extend infrastructure, kind of regardless of other factors. So that really kind of drives our need to kind of continue with the project and drives what we tackle in terms of infrastructure and when. So I just wanted to provide that introduction. You go to the next slide. It shows where we are today onsite. So this is showing what's, they're fully complete in red, and that would be the Downs Road coming in from Route 1 all the way up to essentially where it turns over into kind of the gravel construction road. That's fully complete. And then purple is showing what's underway. And most of those road networks and those infrastructure projects are close to complete, especially Innovation District, Downs Road coming in from Payne Road, Innovation Way, Center Street, and also kind of the artery residential collector streets that are serving Town Center Residential. What is not as far along is Market Street. And Market Street's the latest investment by the project to build and kind of start access to the town center from Higginson Parkway. So that's about 40% underway.
I have just a quick orientation question here.
Sure.
Can you, I spatially challenge, but can you point out where the downtown area is on this map?
The downtown area is right in the center. And it's in that, in future plans that we bring up can show it better, Councilor Hamill.
And that's also where Center Street is?
It's now Market Street. So the street coming in from Higginson Parkway that you can see. Yeah, thank you for pointing to that. That's Market Street, which is now going to be the kind of the gateway in to Town Center. You go to the next one. And so at the same time, this year, we've kicked off our kind of major townwide transportation improvements. And we thought it was really important to report on this, because this is the big year of kicking off sort of a three-year period. So what's complete out there on the road system is there's a new turn lane on Higginson Parkway as you approach Exit 42. That has been completed. The significant corridor improvements on Payne Road from Exit 42 all the way past Bridges Drive are well underway, will be completed by the end of the year. Additional lanes are being added. You know, congestion improvements, new signals, safety improvements, those are all underway, will be completed by the end of '22. And then the Route 1 corridor signal upgrades that will dramatically improve kind of the flow of traffic on Route 1 will be addressed and finalized by the end of the year. So that, all in total, is about a $5 million initiative for this year, and will be completed by the end of this year, shown as under construction right now.
Which was, which means we've spent that money, just to be clear, that's cash out of our pocket.
The next slide is kind of, sure.
I don't know, I don't know if this is a question for you or for Tom, but Costco recently getting approved, are they going to require their own TNP, or is this TNP tougher than anticipated?
The.
Traffic from.
It does. So the current TNP covers Costco. And that's actually why the Payne Road improvements were done first. We knew that was the kind of the growth area at this time for the project, Innovation District, and then this Costco lot. So intentionally, those improvements are being done now. So when they open for business, the road system is ready to accept that traffic, as well as address existing issues. The thing that Costco is also doing is they're adding additional turn lane based on their own. The thing that Costco's also doing is they're adding additional turn lane based on their own kind of site needs. So they're going above and beyond, um, working with the planning board on traffic improvements. Um, this is a a quick chart really to kind of how we meter or show progress on making transportation improvements in comparison to how much traffic we're basically adding under our permit. It's a little complicated, um, but this shows a three-year period, so twelve twenty-two means December twenty-two, December twenty-three, December twenty-four. Um, by the end of December twenty-two, we're gonna complete a third of our transportation improvements. But on the street, by the end of this year, only fourteen percent of the traffic we generate is going to be kind of using, uh, the road network. So the project's intentionally staying ahead of transportation improvements, um, so we can fix, uh, existing congestion and conditions and also be kind of ready to accept traffic that comes from new development. So this will be the trend where, you know, next year, we'll complete that that next sixty, you know, to sixty-six percent, next third. But development will be well behind in terms of when it comes online, based on on how it's being approved and phased, and then you know, by the end of twenty-four, we'll be essentially a hundred percent complete on on transportation improvements when there'll be, you know, years more of kind of development that occurs using the the approved traffic permit.
Dan, if I might add.
Sure.
The the way to think about this is if we stopped traffic improvements today, you would have thirty-three percent left in the gas tank, if you will, for the first leg of the improvements. So that that's what this is, this is, we're gonna kind of monitor this. And also, um, some of you know that really have an eighteen-month sales cycle built in inherently because of all the approvals and civil work and so on. Um, this really speaks to how we're gonna harmonize traffic in the town with the growth expected at the Downs. And it will be able to, we we could actually monitor it. These are trip counts that are really available to anybody. Um, so we thought this might help with traffic. And the other thing I would add is it's fair to say, um, you know, unforeseen issues that that we we don't control, but our traffic issues as a town very well could be behind us after Columbus Day of this year. Once you do those signals on Route One, you're gonna see a major improvement in this town. And and, um, it's something we're proud of because we've got a heavy hand in it, and it's been a big contention for everybody, rightfully so. So good job to everybody involved. I mean, we've we've reacted and and, um, we get some room in the tank if we stop tomorrow for some reason, but, uh, with the eighteen-month lag, you'll see this always have some green in it as we go along. Be very unusual that it wouldn't. Hopefully, that's a good way to depict it. We struggled mightily with a simple way. The inside, not with its complicated, and, uh, obviously we try not to do that, but, um, hopefully it makes sense.
We can fine tune it for next year's report.
I get it. Give me that, though.
Well, that's a little bit, it's taking you some time. Imagine what we went through.
Feel free to jump to the next one. So one of the, obviously, a key component to this is kind of conditions restricting development. Um, and, you know, there's there's macro kind of economic forces, there's construction costs, but the the thing, you know, that the group here in the in the room can control is is really kind of where we're at in terms of permitting, um, to activate the town center, uh, around, um, you know, growth permits. So that is a become a a fairly big restriction on the project, um, and this kind of just walks through the components of what we're restricted, and we want to work with the council on kind of relieving so we can proceed with uh, the first phase of the town center and and continuing to execute infrastructure. Um, so these highlight that that really the town center, um, and the type of development, multifamily, mixed use in non-residential depends on permits so that we can proceed with the infrastructure and and obviously the public amenities that come with the town center. Mixed-use buildings, too, are are right now not able to proceed based on sort of the the scale of them, um, under the the current situation. So permitting, um, helps with that. And then I mentioned earlier, kind of those entitlements, those approval requirements that we have, we have to do those by a certain time. They're not based on development. We have to do those by a certain time with the town, uh, planning board and main DOT. And at this point, you know, we can't proceed with some of those improvements based on, um, based on on permits. Um, I guess lastly, it's sort of the CEA agreement, uh, development in our tax revenue forecasts, you know, is is gonna be impacted by the permit situation.
So I, quick question for you, Dan. So are you, are these things that are in our lap that we need to work on, or it seems like there are some that are main DOT, I mean, there's not much we can do to influence those. Can you can you help us point out which ones are, or maybe that's what checks and the dots are? Which ones are the
I I messed up when I did the checks and the dots, and they're supposed to be all dots. Um, it was a long day, but, um, that they are all related to kind of be able able to move forward with the town center in particular, um, Councilor Hamel. And relate to the item that's second on our agenda this evening. So because we we have town and DOT requirements, yeah. We have town and DOT requirements for infrastructure, and we need to, you know, have town center move forward to put that infrastructure in the ground. So, um, but we can come back to those details at the work, the second half, if that works. Wanting to stay on schedule, I'm gonna keep moving. Um, we have outlook, and this is sort of that same plan that we showed you earlier, and we have kind of an outlook with and without um, permits. And really, kind of our outlook is we're not going to move forward with additional infrastructure, you know, and create new areas for non-residential development, uh, without the the requisite permits that we'll talk about later this evening. Um, the second plan shows what would occur, you know, in terms of, um, in twenty-three, we would start the town center Phase One, you know, with the requisite permits. And that shows you, um, extension of Downs Road into the town center, and then the connection out to to Market Street. So that's a full uh, interconnected roadway, which is the DOT and town requirement, which I was speaking to earlier. That's we we need to do that for our permits within the 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 two-year timeframe coming up.
So just a quick question.
Yeah.
Growth permits, or are these traffic permits you're talking about?
I'm referring to growth permits. Yep, it enables us to meet our traffic permit, like so one leads to the other. Um, the next slide simply shows kind of outlook in terms of additional kind of non-residential development because the town center is our next growth area for non-residential development. So uh, businesses on the first floor of a mixed-use building or retail, uh, restaurant, um, brew pubs that would come along with the activity at Town Center. Um, where we're really kind of falling off sort of on the additional non-residential development pipeline, obviously the same pace of new tax revenue won't won't occur under that situation. When on the next slide, um, and we can talk about this more in the second half of the workshop, is when this more details shows the area that would be activated, um, with permits. So that this shows that first phase of Town Center, um, in that road connection. And the the type of, uh, mixed-use residential and commercial development that would occur.
This is a new product type for us. That's what we're trying to convey here. You can see the mixed-use component. You gotta stand one of these buildings up, and you've got to be able to put both the commercial and residential in it. So it's a, it's a whole new product type. We're really excited about, but this is what is needed to activate that corner. Uh, that's Market Street. You're looking down out toward Higgin's Parkway. Just to help you orient.
Okay. The next slide is just really an illustrative graph. Um, we didn't have all the numbers kind of put in. Nick could could probably do that for us in the future. Um, but this is sort of the our annual incremental growth and in, um, Tom presented earlier, uh, we're showing sort of a generally a straight line, you know, it went from ten to twenty-eight to twenty-eight to fifty-five, so it's has more contour than that. Um, but this shows with permits that would continue. Um, there will be a dip next year kind of regardless. Um, but that dip would would be, you know, quite precipitous if if we don't, uh, have permits to proceed with additional development in the project. And then the next couple of slides are around, um, transportation and and what's coming, and I thought this is useful. This is beyond next year. But the the following two years are, um, our outlook for the the townwide transportation improvements we're making, and I won't get in all the details. I think you generally know where that's occurring, but we're doing work all the way up in North Scarborough, eight corners along Route One. Um, so this is year two of what improvements will be made. Um, it's execution's really dependent on, you know, continued development to help finance it. Um, but that these are going to make dramatic improvements in new areas of the community that have been kind of long-suffering, particularly North Scarborough. Um, and then in twenty-four is kind of the completion of this, um, comprehensive transportation improvement project, working with DOT in the town. And that this focuses on the Payne Road area. So, um, really, Muzzy Road intersection is an entirely new signalized intersection to fix a longstanding problem. And then signal improvements all the way up to, um, up to Gorham Road and ma- in the main mall, so all the way into South Portland, past the entrance to the main mall. Um, and so those are planned, um, and and can occur as as if development, you know, obviously continues. And that would wrap up our, you know, major kind of immediate transportation improvements. And I think, um, the final kind of remarks are just kind of report on town committees, and I think you're aware of, uh, much of what we've done, certainly. Um, there's three requirements needing to be done by, uh, the end of March in twenty-four. And they're quite defined, the downtown committee process, and we'd spent really most of twenty-one working on that. We held off on you know, proceeding with the town center, um, to to actually get good guidance from the downtown committee and collaborate with them. You have their study and recommendations. And then the community center process that occurred kind of the year before, and obviously was kind of interrupted a bit by the pandemic, you know, that's complete. Um, and the final piece is really the kind of the school committee process, and we expect that'll, um, ramp up, um, potentially, um, if if the Downs is a potential site, and for certainly could be. Um, and, you know, work through that process with them, you know, obviously before, uh, March of twenty-four, if if it is appropriate. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Peter for conclusions and
Remember, I saved enough time.
We might, we might, we might, yeah. No, I'll be quick. Thank you. Um, I wanted to thank Dan and the rest of our team that's here. This is a lot of work to put together. Uh, we have a lot going on, so thank you, and thank you to everybody else that was involved, and thanks you folks for taking time for us. Um, just quickly, um, kind of as 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 we've gone along, kind of project to date, one thing duly noted, we have met our commitments, um, as we've gone along, uh, as a developer. Um, one thing that's not in here on this top piece, you know, we deal with about six agencies, um, to move anything down at the Downs. And all the, all these agencies see the world like we do. Um, Polon Water District's a great example. They make us build stuff in loops um, for technical reasons beyond me. I know that it's expensive and we're out in areas that we don't have water and power and so, uh, water and, excuse me, uh, power and sewer and and, uh, gas. Uh, so we can't develop that site, but they still make us do that work. It's just very cumbersome. And what we're trying to convey here is there is an eighteen-month delay from the time we we get a permit on anything to the time it's actually activated. And I think that plays out as we go along and when we talk about pace. So that's the 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 conveyance here. So we've been doing things according to, um, all the rules. Uh, and I think the team's done a great job with it. Um, we delivered, uh, on the non-residential infrastructure and committee process requirements, um, the downtown committee and such, uh, we've checked the blocks there. Um, we've been addressing the town's, uh, biggest needs, uh, from what we understand, workforce housing and affordable housing. This is stuff we're extremely proud of, um, and we've built substantial sheltered incremental tax revenue for the town. Um, which now is servicing debt that otherwise, uh, would have not have been able to be serviced um, via the the smart selection you folks gave at a hundred percent sheltering, i.e. the Public Safety Building. Um, we have got, uh, fifty-five million in increased value, um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. There'll be quite an adjustment here. Um, Tom had the numbers earlier. Um, our first year, ten-three, our second year, twenty-eight-eight. Uh, these are incremental numbers I'm providing. Third year, twenty-eight-seven. Last year, fifty-five point seven million. Um, year five, uh, which is two thousand twenty-three, we're only expecting about, no matter what we do right now, we're expecting about thirty-five million in incremental value. Create, uh, thirty-nine, excuse me, thirty-nine million. It's about a thirty percent decline from twenty-two. Um, so again, what I'm trying to convey here is not necessarily those numbers, everybody can read the numbers, but the message is we will be off our forecast. Uh, what the comp plan called for, what our our original CEA forecasting called for, the the trains coming off the tracks in twenty-three, we're good right now. You know, we look good. So we've got to we've got to adjust ourselves, we've got to adjust maybe the various headwinds that we have so we can get the train back on the tracks, and ultimately, at the end of this, we deliver the comp plan and, um, all the various, uh, public benefits that go along with it. Thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, you know, I missed the last page.
Come on back.
Scratch that, exit. I'm back.
Sounded good, though.
Scratch that, uh. Actually, I've said it. We're good. Thank you.
Dan slipped that last page, which means Q and A.
Thousands? Well, I guess I'll I'll throw out, are are you feeling any headwinds from the market in terms of rising interest rates and?
Yes, we are. Um, we felt that this summer, particularly, um, June, July, and the first half of August, although it feels like it's opened back up, and I'm speaking primarily on residential. Um, on the commercial side, um, it's really interesting. What we've found is if we have a product stood up, a building stood up, um, there's so much business activity spurred from Portland in a various, uh, growth that's being experienced there, mostly on the on like the, um, uh, importing and exporting out of Portland, a lot of CSX stuff that's happening, the improvements down at Rigby Yard that are happening. Um, that's spurring a lot of activities. So if we've, if we've got on the commercial side, rates matter, but availability also matters. I mean, we stood up a thirty thousand square foot building recently on spec, and it's it's spoken for. Um, good, long-term lease companies, um, really good wage bands, um, very impressive. So we think we've got you know, a combination that we can deliver to to deal with headwinds there. On the on the, uh, residential side, we're 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 back kind of flowing well right now, but I think that's temporary. It's a time of the year. Um, so what we're doing there is we're trying to reset our pricing as it relates to the building cost. So honestly, I I don't mind saying it. The environment of six percent interest rates, um, for someone's mortgage uh, is okay, provided our material costs, and ultimately our sell price can come down. And we're in a, we're in a transitional phase right now where that needs to get adjusted. Um, and, um, timing-wise, and geez, if I could predict that, I probably wouldn't be sitting here, I guess, but it looks like that is what will happen. How long it takes to correct um, is a bit unknown, but I suspect we're on our way. We have not seen increases, uh, uh, on, you know, lumber as an example, that seems to have quelled. It never goes down as quick as it goes up, is what I'm telling you. But there's a, there's a path forward there. We're optimistic. And again, um, with multifamily activity, it's it's, um, having stuff readily available and and available for someone to move in within thirty to ninety days seems to be what's working. Um, so we gotta kind of stand it up and and, uh, count on the, uh, the market delivering for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say, you know, thanks for the update, and I have to admit that I think there's a lot of positives there, um, and some surprising success. I think also, uh, I'm interested in the way that you've tried to reframe things. I'm encouraged by the the fact that, uh, for example, with the downtown, you're you're talking now more in terms of infrastructure and roads, sewers, and that sort of thing, that is a little bit easier to understand than sort of like the market aspects of trying to activate a you know, mixed-use downtown. So I think that's very positive. Um, the other thing I'd say is that I I think that, uh, I know we've worked hard on permitting and that sort of thing. I I think we're gonna have to reframe that completely. Um, I don't know exactly what that's gonna look like, but I think we're gonna have to, you know, um, put the thinking cap on again about that. The one thing that's still, uh, that also I want to give you credit for, that most people don't realize is that number one, your traffic impact even as planned is less than other parts. even as planned, is less than other parts of town and other developments, number one. And number two, that the things that you're proposing will have a big impact, a positive impact on the traffic problem in town, which is what we hear a lot about. The thing that, the other thing that we hear a lot about, which we frankly have not made any progress on, and this is something that I think added to us getting off track with the long discussion we had about the exemption. I don't want to get too far ahead of myself because you know it's the next agenda item, but if, if we were, you know, if I had to answer today, what have we gotten in the way of the three things that were promised to us in CEA? Well, we've checked the box, okay? We completed the processes, but we still really don't have anything that we can point to that's tangible, whether that's land or, you know, or our community center or, you know, a downtown. And I know those latter two are probably, you know, our bad because of various reasons, but we're still, that really hurts us politically. And that will continue to dog us unless we try to get something on the board for that. So, but, but, you know, you guys are great at hitting targets and, and I would just say, you know, we, you know, hope you can keep it up, but you also need to help us answer the questions that I mentioned. And also the big question is the limit valve on growth in general. And there's a lot of units, we talked a lot about, a lot of units that don't really count, you know, in the totals. You know, we're tracking a number one forty four, whatever the rolling tenure average. We, we still need help to, to track what you want versus what we can give you, looking at those, at those limits. So, but, you know, nice work and thank you for the updates.
Thank you. One, one comment, if I could. You know, when, when you think about what's happening, think about the comp plan and really just allowing us to execute the comp plan. That's really, you know, when you kind of piece it all together and, and perhaps looking back, one thing that could be done different on a size project like this is probably start the traffic mitigation work ahead of time. You know, as I look back now, what we've done is we've stepped it up and we're going to be ahead of it now. But gee, if we had done that back in, I don't know, nineteen, whenever it might have been seventeen, that might have been a different feeling for how the citizens of the town see the traffic situation, you know. So we learn, we all learn, and we work it out. And I think that's behind us. I truly do.
Councilor Anderson.
On your slide thirteen, when you had the Dan's bullet and the four check or three check. Can you just help me understand how the permit restrictions impact the third bullet around not completing the infrastructure as required by town zoning, town engineering? That's, that's one area that I don't feel like I have a good understanding. And I'd like to hear a little bit more of how, what's the relationship between the permits and that, or is it actually something in our zoning that needs to change or, or ordinances? So I just, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Yeah. So a lot of it relates to executing the, the first phase of town center. So we're actually required by the town and by Maine DOT in advance of twenty twenty six, which seems like far off, but it doesn't when you talk, when we talk about eighteen to thirty six month kind of permit and construction cycle. We have to make that connection to, for traffic reasons, for infrastructure reasons. We also are going to have to make, as Peter was alluding to, a significant water connection all the way up to Innovation District. Just to take an X bite up the street. So we can't do these dead end kind of concepts like a typical subdivision could with a dead end road. So to proceed, you know, the, the team needs to have a plan, needs to have a permitted town center, needs to have a layout, needs to have initial residential. We've talked a lot about that with the downtown committee to kind of get the town center started. Mixed use buildings and then commercial comes after there's a bit more vitality to execute that infrastructure. So that infrastructure is required of us. Kind of regardless of, of whether we take, we go up, you know, fifty feet or, you know, five hundred feet or thirty five hundred feet. So we're kind of been placed in that situation by all of the other masters that Peter was referring to. Especially on a project like this, you know, we expect to follow the master plan, you know, in terms of what the project can do. So do the utility companies, so does DOT. They expect us to follow the master plan. So, but they don't, they don't recognize necessarily some of the other kind of headwinds with other agencies. So that's really the, the key piece there on infrastructure and it's totally related to the ability to kind of proceed with that mixed use center in particular.
It's interesting. Each agency is mutually exclusive. I mean, they have, you've got to run water. I'm picking on Polon Water District for, just because it's current in my mind, but you know, we can't, if we're gonna go up the road three hundred feet, they want us to run water eighteen hundred, two thousand feet. I mean, it just isn't, it's what it is. I wish we could do something about it. Because it would make it a whole lot less risky. But it's not the way it is, unfortunately. We're a recipient.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for the update, both Tom and Crossroads team. I, I think we can jump into the second half of the workshop where you want to talk about, I think, what, what you're looking to do next, in the next bite of the apple.
Great. I'll jump right in and some of this overlaps, so I can skip through kind of things that we've already covered. But the next presentation, if you have it handy. And this is, it's, it's coming up.
As he's, as he's pulling that up, if I might, you know, what you're, what you're getting ready to see is a essentially a result of a year-long process with the town, the council, every, all the stakeholders. And what, as a result of that process, we're trying to take a, a less of a bite at permitting needs. And it's exactly geared to those infrastructure requirements that we're faced with from the agency. So we're just, we're just trying to harmonize that. And at the same time, we are working, we're working through this traffic component and keeping traffic ahead. So the, the impact on the traffic side, although we already have the permits and one could argue that, the reality is the burden on the flow of traffic will not be what it has been because we're ahead of it. There's a huge difference with that. And that's, that's the thinking that's gone by, by this kind of bridge plan.
Thanks, Peter. If you jump to the next one, just this will provide a quick overview of what we're going to cover. And for, I know the council as well to speed on the town center concept, but there's members of the public or viewers, I'm just gonna touch on kind of the town center and its components for context. Talk quickly about process to date and then kind of a new permit proposal really centered on kind of proof of concept meeting. Let's do an initial phase of town center and demonstrate success, demonstrate destination, excitement, kind of the amenities that come along with it. Plan for additional public amenities, many of them coming out of the downtown, the town's downtown committee process and really kind of furthering execution on that. Dealing with pace, kind of the, the pace of development and relating to, to the project so far. And then some of those kind of hot button sort of growth fiscal management things really kind of traffic in schools is what, you know, what we hear and how that can be addressed through this process. And some final conclusions, and then we'd love kind of Q and A and feedback. But jump into the, to this, this is just to, to, to demonstrate that a town center at the Downs isn't a new concept and provide some context, starting back in two thousand and six. The town really kind of set on the path of planning for a town center at the Downs rather than a casino at the Downs. So that failed three times. And instead, from O six, moving on, there's been all these incremental kind of steps taken to, to launch kind of the mixed use town center. And kind of here we are at the doorstep, you know, and, and plans of activation in twenty twenty three. You know, with, with planning and permitting being successful before then. If you jump to the next one, just to, for those less familiar, this is really the area that we're talking about. To your question earlier, I, Councilor Hamel, in terms of, okay, where is the town center? It's really, it's in the core of the project with easy access from Higas Parkway. And if you're in the Downs, you know, coming from Route one, it's really the next kind of area north of where development is in the vicinity of just kind of west of the grandstand in that area. From a conceptual standpoint, I know the council's seen this before, but we're really planning on kind of this unique, modern, mixed-use place, really focused with a town green in the middle, a major public amenity, not just for the project, but for the entire community. And we, we need more work with that. We need more public input on that in terms of what are the amenities in it so that it is that destination for the entire community. So that's part of this kind of proposal is to have that public process to, to make it Scarborough's central square, if you will. And this layout really is, in addition to the town green, just the general layout is a combination of the feedback we've gotten from the downtown committee through that whole what, nine to twelve month process and ideas the committee had and, and concepts. And our kind of expert consultant that came in, I think we had a good presentation back, I think it was March or, March timeframe about their recommendations on how to create this kind of special mixed-use place. So this isn't just us cooking it up. We've had a lot of great, obviously, direction and expertise that's come up with this concept. The next piece is to really design and permit it and phase it, which is part of tonight's discussion. As it relates to kind of what we're calling right now kind of Plan Two Eighty Nine, as the feedback we got throughout the planning process and even with the town's Levine consultant that, that worked with you in the spring is there needs to be kind of that residential component early and, and that's a big part of the phasing plan we have for town center to have people living in the town center, living over shops, you know, the mixed-use building concept. And that's where on, on this plan, you know, you see the orange development. That's really more of the kind of the residential piece of town center, which then spills into the mixed use and then the commercial towards Market Street along with kind of civic opportunities for civic space, such as a community center if the town so chooses to do that. So the next slide is some of the concepts, and you've seen some of these before. And we're excited to, to kind of take the next step and bring these more to life and get into more details. They certainly can change and be, planning board will certainly help us with our concepts through the review process. But obviously, there's, there's residential, there's mixed use, there's commercial, but there's also a lot of kind of public programming that goes into this. Particularly the, the central square that we've envisioned here that we want more input on and can activate through this process. This also gives you a sense of kind of those new housing typologies that Peter was referring to, new products that are deserving and necessary in a town center, but don't fit neatly under the kind of current permitting, growth management permitting process from a numbers standpoint. You go to the next one. This is simply a recap of kind of where we've been. And the downtown committee process was in twenty one, provided recommendations. We actually held back on kind of working with the council, certainly on a growth permit proposal until that was complete. And, and then put in application back in October. Obviously, we had workshops, you know, throughout the winter and spring. The Levine participated in that process, provided some guidance on sort of residential development being key in the town center. And really leads us to kind of where we are. And where we are tonight is a more targeted proposal so that we can kind of do the proof of concept and do a first phase of the town center with really the urgency of getting into some design and permitting so this can start, you know, as, as has been planned for quite some time in twenty three with the first phase. The next slide kind of walks through just kind of Plan Two Eighty Nine so-called and what's proposed. And what's proposed is two hundred and eighty nine permits for multifamily and mixed-use development, dwellings and mixed-use buildings. The vast majority of those would be dedicated to the town center, the first phase, to really activate it and get the project started as we've talked about. And then the, the minority are to execute some, some really important prod, multifamily projects and live-work projects that don't fit neatly under the annual allocation. And that includes one in town center and another actually in Innovation District, which would be right next to IDEX, a live-work type project that we think is a great fit for that area of the project. And from a schedule standpoint, and we've alluded to kind of lead times, this is really completion schedule is, is out of ways. So this would be permits, you know, obviously nothing would be completed this year. Only the first two smaller projects in twenty three really enabling kind of planning, design, approval and construction to occur so town center could get up, up and running, you know, occupancy more in twenty four, twenty five. So this is really a three to, three and a third, three and a half year planning process, permit process with about, when averaged, about eighty seven units over that time period. But again, vast majority in the, the outer years. This shows, the next slide shows you geography, and I kind of described this. And you saw earlier that kind of first phase of town center is the majority of, of where the permits are, are critical. And those other two kind of key projects, one in innovation, one in town center residential. You go to the next one.
Sure.
Does that include any, you know, senior low income workforce that we're getting?
It doesn't include, no, no.
We tie that in here in this presentation.
Yeah.
We thought of the same thing.
And actually, to that point, we've, we're actually nineteen percent affordable. We've actually liked traffic, frankly. We've overbuilt, not to say that there isn't more affordable housing needed, but we've, it's a ten percent requirement under the zoning. So far, we're at nineteen percent. So.
Ten or nineteen percent would be in the two eighty nine. It wouldn't be.
Well, it's already constructed.
This is, this is a, this is exempt, exempted permit requests only. We do roll it up for you though, to help set pace.
I just want to be clear too. These are in addition to your annual allocation.
Yeah. And we have a slide that can help kind of put that into an annual standpoint.
No, we've got it.
Yep. So key elements, and there are three. One is that kind of proof of concept. You know, we want to take the town center and bites and have, you know, a meaningful first phase that meets all those infrastructure needs, but isn't, you know, asking for a, a larger permit pool. It includes kind of some key elements here, you know, activating that first, at least that first mixed-use building with having, you know, that ground floor, commercial, restaurant, brewery, retail, all those things that people are excited about in a town center. It would enable infrastructure to serve Maine's first affordable disabled housing project that's been in the press. And they want to be right in the town center. But they are at a price point where, you know, we're not extending infrastructure just for their project. They need to rely on a larger phase. And then we've talked about the town and DOT requirements for the connection out to Higas Parkway. And what it also does is it builds that Market Street. So commercial development can happen and can be activated to the non-residential comments earlier. This is just that kind of image of, of that area of the project and, and the character of what can happen with Plan Two Eighty Nine. So if you go to the next one, this is the other piece and sort of unfinished business from the downtown committee, public spaces, you know, and planning for like, like the townwide amenities. And with the first phase, this enables infrastructure to kind of come up to that town square and it can enable good planning. We want to have a public process around what does that town square look like? What are the amenities and access and all the cool things that can be there? So that can be immediately constructed as a second phase. So that would occur. You know, in the next twelve months as part of this, this approval. The other thing that would occur is reserving, we talked about the community center site, that came out of the downtown committee recommendations, reserving a parcel in that second or third phase of town center for that activity. So that would occur as part of this. And a reservation would happen. So it doesn't, that area doesn't get used for something else. And then the, the other component is, is kind of paced to the questions about the numbers, if you will. And to date, over four years of occupancy, so this is, this is where numbers from the report earlier are a little bit different, just because. over four years of occupancy, so this is, this is where numbers from the report earlier are a little bit different, just because this year isn't complete and we're expecting a lot of, uh, units to be completed by the end of this year, early next year. And that would be a four-year kind of occupancy timeframe. Um, is four hundred and eighty units. So that's about a hundred and twenty or exactly a hundred and twenty units per year. Um, again, each year is not that number. So it, but that is the average. Um, under this proposal, we've broken it down, um, by this, you know, permit requests coupled with the annual allocation. So it's clear. Um, and you see um, over a three, three and a half year period, you know, what that tally is and it's, it's about the same. It's slightly over that average pace. Um, and you see that. And it also relates to the feedback we've gotten on town center in terms of kind of a modest acceleration to kind of get the town center started. That was something that came was sort of loud and clear from our consultants and, and your consultants, uh, through that process. And then one thing I'll jump to you, uh, Mr. Hamel is kind of the, the timing of the occupancy back to traffic is really kind of backloaded, if you will, so that transportation improvements are being completed when the majority of these units are kind of being occupied, when there's activity, um, and that's kind of key too. So that, well, like we were talking about earlier, the gas tank on traffic capacity.
Feedback, I, you know, with the details, it's helping to actually paint a better picture in terms of what it's going to look like. So that's been very helpful. It's a long way from where we started.
Yeah.
But, uh, if I, if I have this right, it's over four hundred units in the phase one presidential phase. You guys crushed it. Okay. And you know, you exceeded all your targets. Isn't this roughly the same pace we'd be looking at for the next three years? A, a residential phase pace of growth of over four hundred units in the downtown phase of, of, of the development.
Prox, we exceeded our targets on non-residential, um. We exceeded our targets on non-residential. Is that you're saying, or?
We were only, we were only able to go on the pace that we were, had permits for. You know, so it's, but, but what we're, your point though is, is well taken and we thought about that, um. And essentially, again, we've got to try to figure out a way to convey that when these permits are pulled, these don't come online right then. They don't come online all at the same time. So that's a huge component to factor into the pace. And then coupled with that, we're ahead on our TNP. So we're actually gonna, gonna be able to, we're providing the allevi- alleviating the traffic ahead of schedule as we go through this. So, you know, and, and for, for an example, next year, I, I believe all we have coming on for residential is sixty-four units?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, excuse me. You know, so we're, we're going to have an off year. Um, good news, bad news. Um, I think it's, it's, it's okay. We just have to know where we're going, you know, in the, in the coming years. And we are trying to, we are trying to, um, address the pace matter as we committed upfront. We're really trying to hit that uh, piece for you folks to um, hopefully make some sense out of. Yet we still got to satisfy the six agencies when we put infrastructure in. So it's a little bit of a challenge, but this would do it. This would work.
The, the next slide can also speak to kind of the, the management piece of this, you know, around what I think generally in town are, are concerns, um, certainly in terms of the school process, school-aged children. And this exemption or this permitting request is, is really not for units that have a bearing there. Um, you know, we've, the towns run the numbers, um, and even if the numbers were doubled or, or tripled, um, there's not a major impact here in terms of the town center type development in the kind of the live-work, um, project that I mentioned earlier. These are, these aren't geared for families, um, at all. Um, and so history has shown, you know, in the project so far, out of a hundred and forty-five apartments that are occupied, you know, school-aged children, there's two. Um, at the same time, there's a fee that's required for each of those units in the school impact fee. Um, we ran the numbers and got a little bit higher and, and uh, maybe we can settle that with, with town. Maybe it's seven hundred, not six ninety or seven thirty, but, um, you know, that's what's been paid by the project overall. Um, but in terms of those apartments, you know, for those two schoolchildren, a hundred and seventy thousand is paid. Um, in school impact fee that goes towards, you know, future expansion or facility needs. So that's a significant payment for, for what's actually, uh, occurring. Um, and that's the type of housing that would be in the town center. Um, there would be, you know, single family and other parts of the project, certainly that would have a higher, higher rate of impact like any single-family neighborhood. So that's a key piece, um, and it certainly relates to kind of pace and the type of unit that's being, um, that needs permits. And how it's being managed and how it's being kind of responsibly managed by the town fiscally and the funding you're getting to compensate for running impact, albeit small. In terms of traffic, and, and we've talked about it a lot already, um, it's important also to understand these, this type of housing doesn't generate a lot of traffic. So if you think about that permit number, that unit count, that's about three hundred trips. Um, and as the town measures them in the PMP tower, you know, the busy time of day. Um, that's nine percent of our overall kind of traffic permit. So we're demonstrating certainly that we're making those improvements, um, ahead of or on, on track with this development. It's really not a big component of the traffic, um, but it's a really important one where it, it can proceeding with, with the town center proceeding with these permits can enable the financing of those improvements so that they can be made and can compensate for other congestion as well as other aspects of the project. Um, so those are the things that we've heard and wanted to kind of address, uh, in terms of balancing kind of pace with actual impacts and, and how it's being managed. Um, and I think with that, we just have some conclusions, Peter, and can turn it back to the council.
In the essence of time. I just have one thing to add. Thank you.
Um, so conclusions, we talked about earlier, you know, town center's been planned for quite a while, um, and we're on the cusp of it and certainly wanna, with the downtown committee's recommendations, wanna, wanna proceed and we're really excited to, you know, starting, uh, with construction next year. And we think a kind of measured proof of concept, uh, approach is the right one in terms of where we are right now, um, which comes with kind of requirements for mixed-use pace, uh, planning for additional public amenities. And, and the type of units, um, and the type of mixed-use project really is a, a model development approach in terms of low, low impacts and, and high benefit. Um, and also the town has great impact fees to fill in the gaps. Um, so we think this is a, a really balanced, kind of responsible approach to, to the situation. And are eager to proceed. So we can work with the council on, uh, executing the comp plan and getting started with the town center. So I'll stop there and.
Yeah, just, just one thing I'd like to add, I think would be helpful. So we've started your comp plan. That's really what we're saying. And, and along the way, there's some incredible benefits that the town's, um, uh, receiving, um, as a result of the district, district, district being created. Um, and all the sheltering that's taking place for the incrementality of this value creation for the town. Um, and we feel that, um, we'd like to finish it. That's really what we're saying. And this is just another phase. Um, it's not obviously what we, we wanted originally. It's what certainly we can live with. And, um, we really look forward to your feedback. Um, thanks for your time and love to answer some questions, please.
Thank you, guys. Any questions, comments? Council, Greg.
Just a quick clarification for me. Uh, when you did your calculations on how many permits or units that would be developed over that time? Or I guess how many exemptions you need from the GMO? Did your total number of units being built in there include the three I projects? Because you don't need the permits to, for those, right? Because it's a.
You know, it didn't include three I, um, I don't know if that's.
Going in the space.
Yeah, I think they're planning about forty-five units. Um, we didn't include that, um, because they're not, we don't need permits for them, um.
But it's included. Other, I was gonna say, is it included in the pace that you had? That's what I, I want.
No, no.
And then do you have other projects that would not require permits that you're aware of at this stage? That would be in addition to the ones you're requesting?
We, no.
It's just the three I in this phase?
Unless you exempt workforce.
Okay.
Just, uh, but sorry, no.
Serious? You would build work, workforce if it was allowed?
Is a huge need, um, and if materials do what we anticipate them to do, um, uh, it's possible.
Okay, that's good to know.
Certainly possible.
Right. Council Anderson.
Yeah. So just, just for clarification, is this a new application? And is the second one or the original one no longer valid and you plan to withdraw that? And this is kind of our new starting point? Or is this a second application?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Melissa dress up. Way over my pay grade.
I, I, I'm gonna try to simplify it as much as possible. Our intent is to, um, uh, consistent with everything that's been said so far, simplify this, take a smaller bite of the apple and focus on what's needed in a shorter term. But that being said, it's not an effort to abandon the longer-term perspective and the longer-term ask. So the proposal at this point is not to withdraw the original application. That's ultimately something we'd like to take up again and discuss with the council and look at in light of whatever short-term two to three-year measure. We can ultimately work out here with respect to this plan. Um, so our hope would be that that remain on the table and remain pending so that we can come back to that as soon as we address this. But our focus at this point is what we can do for the next three years to keep the project moving forward. And then reconsider what that application looks like in light of what gets done for this interim measure. So we'd like to keep it pending. We do view these as two separate asks at this point that would be, that would remain, you know, open for consideration.
Okay, I, I'd like to ask a follow-up on that. So if it's two separate asks, it's for the same, it's for the same phase in the same area of town, the downtown. So I don't know how, you know, and those numbers add up pretty fast, right? Four thirty plus two eighty-nine. You know, that's a big number. So, so I, I just, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I think we're gonna probably have a longer conversation about that.
So yeah, as I wanted to clarify, as, as I'm suggesting that, what I'm suggesting is that the original application would remain pending, but we'd want to reserve the right to revise that number. I'm not saying that we're asking for two eighty-nine plus four thirty. I'm saying that that's an application for an exemption for a longer-term ask. Ultimately, our hope was for that to be a longer-term ask. This is obviously a shorter-term ask. And I think that there's also a conversation that would be worthwhile with respect to how this request is handled. The current GMO includes a section six, which it lists specific exemptions and had a provision for the downs in particular. This could be handles, handled as an ordinance amendment. It would not necessarily need to be a request for an exemption under seven, section seven F, as our original application was. So, you know, we're, we're open to how the original application gets looked at. We just want to keep that open so that we can in fact come back to that and revisit it after this is, after this is addressed.
Yeah, one, and one comment for both you folks that, you know, along the way, we've all, we've all known that the comp plan called for a couple thousand dwelling units. That's really what we were aiming at over a period of twenty years. So we're, we're trying to kind of vector into that somehow, some way in, in set pace. And this is this is a result of holy moly, um, you know, by the time we activate any permits we get today, we're out in the early twenty-four. Oh boy, we gotta, we gotta do something, um, to keep pace with our forecasting for, uh, the incremental values of tax, tax, uh, dollars.
So, um, you know, some of this is up to the council as well. Uh, I'm gonna think out loud for a minute here, but it was so councillor Hamel pushed me to have the annual update before we entertain anything further from, uh, from the downs. And just, it seems to make sense to, to do it this way. So I, you know, next year, the next, maybe the next time we talk about this is next year during your annual update and you give us another three-year outlook for what you might need then. And then we can kind of see if there's some sort of action we can take in the interim. I think it, uh, you're not going anywhere, I don't think, or I, I, I don't hope. We're gonna, we have a long-term relationship, having some predictable cadence to how we allow you to continue building, I think, makes sense. You know, I, I will say what we, I think learned this past year is trying to create a twenty-year window is a little bit too overwhelming for us. Uh, because I, I mean, just the second after you present it, the market changes or something else has changed. It, it's, we're in a dynamic environment, uh, whether that's good or bad.
Yeah, we just need predictability so we can plan and that kind of thing.
So if they don't withdraw, we could, um, dispose of it ourselves if we choose. Go ahead.
I just, just my personal comment on the exemption process and things at this point, like I feel like it's made it more difficult for you and for us to operate. So personally, I'm a, I'm an advocate of, we need to get, update the GMO, get rid of the exemption process. Establish a fair number that enables you guys to grow. I'm not as worried about having annual check-ins and revising things annually. I'd much more prefer to write the rules, make them fair, consider your needs and how we write those rules and what's in our comp plan. And make sure that we do that and then just make the rules very clear for you and for us, establish that predictability that I think you guys need and are looking for to be able to meet your eighteen-month turnaround times. Um, and in addition, make sure that it's also communicated and fair to the rest of the development community. I feel like we did create the GMO, we've created this exemption process, hoping that that would help us manage things a little bit. And in my opinion, it's not working and I don't feel like continuing to work through this application will necessarily be any better than what we did the past year. And I'm worried that that's going to be the same situation that we're going to get caught up in where it's going to be a year from now. Nothing's really moved. And I don't want that to happen to you guys either. I want to make sure we write the rules, we're clear on what the rules are in terms of growth and development, the public understands what those rules are. And it's very clear because I think we've created a lot of ambiguity right now and it's, it's made us confused, I think, as a council. And I think it's also been unfair to you guys. So I'm, I would like to see this council. I know the ordinance committee has talked about it, really take a hard look at our GMO after this past year that it's been implemented and see if we can make something better. That again, gives you guys a little bit more wiggle room to operate appropriately and also make sure the public understands that we're slowing the pace of growth in the process. And we did commit in the comp plan that we want high growth in the downs and giving you forty-three units a year is not acceptable and it's not fair and it's not appropriate to deliver the vision we're trying to create for the community. And so I think the exemption process was meant to try and address that and I just don't think it's working. And I am curious to hear your guys' perspective. If you had the option of continuing down this path of an exemption, council exemption process versus us just looking at the rules and making sure you can grow at a, at a appropriate rate, maybe not exactly what you want, but build at the pace you want to build while we kind of make sure we're managing the pace overall, what your preference would be.
Sure. Um, as we sit today, I mean, we've learnt a lot. Um, leave it section seven F, um, any, in the, uh, exemption, uh, ordinance. It was designed to address this larger growth, um, and it's been very, very difficult for us. Um, it's nearly impossible and we have nothing planned at the moment, which is, you know, we employ between three and four hundred people at any given point every day. Um, at the downs, these are well-paid jobs and um, I think short-term, we really need what we're asking. Long-term, I think what you're saying is extremely reasonable. Um, we need a retool. We need time to do that. We've got to, we gotta get the work. We've really been off the rails with this. And so we're, we're we're trying to harmonize that, that growth rate, um, that pace. We're putting the money into the, we're, we're trying to take care of along the way, what we've learned of all the issues, primarily traffic. Um, and we're, we're now ahead of that. So we feel like, okay, let's, let's do this proof of concept phase. And what you're suggesting, we'll absolutely sign up for. Um, I think it's a long-term fix and I think it takes us all the way through, um, for comp plan completion. Um, I hope I answered your question, question clearly. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so we have a regular meeting starting in just two or three minutes. So if you're here to, uh, add your voice to, uh, the, the workshop that we had, I'm gonna allow public comment at the beginning of our meeting, right after we get started. So you're welcome to hang out for a few minutes and share with us then. Um, other than that, I'll. Um, other than that, I'll thank you guys for coming. It was a very productive update. Uh, we've done a lot of good work, a lot of good things going on in the downs and I appreciate you taking the time to share it with us. And same thing with town staff, uh, you know, it takes a lot of work to compile all this information, keep track of it, but I think you did a good, clear. Job of, of communicating what's happening in the downs. Uh, we will recess for three minutes and then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Hamel and I live at Three Bay Street in Pine Point. And I'm here tonight to talk about something not on the agenda, which most definitely should be on an agenda. And should have been actually on many agendas, which included discussions of upcoming capital projects. The town of Scarborough has a set of financial and fiscal policies updated last in November twenty nineteen. To cover a wide range of topics related to our use of debt, capital planning and investments. First, I want to read a quote from Tom Hall. About our financial and fiscal policy taken directly from the recent fin- finance committee meeting. Tom said. Prior finance committees spent literally three to four years working through and ultimately coming up with this fiscal policy. Which Joe Cutera, our bond guy, says is the most comprehensive in the state. We should heed his warning. That if you have a policy and you don't follow it, it's almost worse than having no policy at all. And I'd like to give a couple of examples of the policy and how we have disregarded it. Page one of the policy states. To enhance creditworthiness and prudent financial management, the town is committed to systematic capital planning. Intergovernmental cooperation and coordination and long term financial planning. There's been no public discussion over the last year of the priority of major projects coming up from different departments. In fact, the school project. Was not even mentioned in, or included in last year's, this year's capital budget. The policy has been ignored. The policy also states, primary responsibility for making debt financing recommendations rests with the finance director. With assistance from finance staff. Our recent financing recommendations have been done by the town council chair and bond council with no staff involvement. Does the town require the council chair to have professional liability insurance in his roles as financial advisor to the town? Should that be added to the policy? So many sections of the policy have been disregarded and I've highlighted just two. Finally, I'd like to quote Tom Hall once more from that recent finance committee meeting. He stated, there are some reporting requirements which fall to staff. To this committee and to the town council. We are also in the past, we also in the past prepared a bit of a dashboard. That really mirrored some of the important metrics that came dat- came out of that policy and admittedly. We've kind of fallen down and need to redouble our efforts back around that. You are running a large business with revenues and expenses over a hundred million dollars. This is a serious business. Following our financial and fiscal policy is not optional. It's a requirement. Thank you.
May, may I speak to the downs presentation early? My name is John Rice. I live at one sixty seven Scarborough Downs Road. So I am absolutely a resident of the Scarborough Downs project and I just wanted to speak in favor of the project and. The opportunity that this uh project brings to our community where we struggle with the size of the school and our infrastructure. I recognize that there is trepidation about the ra- rapid rate of growth within our community. However, with the benefits that we're going to receive or do receive through the, the TIF zoning, um. It, it really nets up such a positive impact uh for our future of the town. So I'm just encouraging. The expediting of the growth as much as possible uh from the council, from the town. Um, but do recognize change is difficult for some. Uh, the density of the project in such a geographic location is really prime and to see the, the traffic improvements. Um, is very uh positive. I think it's not just for the development, for the rest of the town. As well. So I'm encouraged by this project. I, this is our third house in this town in over twenty six years and we chose to retire here. Basically because this town center was gonna be created and fundamentally with all the services along Scarborough Downs road literally itself. We can age out in our community and, and spend the rest of our years here in a community that we love. So growth is inevitable. We are absolutely in the floodplain of um. Housing and economic growth from the Portland community. It's just a matter of time and this is one way that we can really harness the, the value of the dollar and helping us. Helping you guys make really solid uh decisions as it comes to spending that money. For the, for the benefit of the entire town, not just the development and to bring resources. To the table that were otherwise wouldn't be uh realized. So thank you for your time and, and your service and commitment to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any other members of the public that would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, with that, I'll close public comment. Item five is minutes from our August seventeen, two thousand and twenty two regular town council meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Tony, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Seider?
Yes.
Councillor Anderson?
Yes.
Councillor Hamel?
Yes.
Councillor Caterina?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
And Chairman Kuchi?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Item six is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments that a council would like to propose? Seeing none, I'll move to item seven, which is the treasurer's warrants, which I signed prior to the meetings uh this evening. And item eight is town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items to report this evening. Uh, as I've been doing fairly consistently, just to update on my recruitment, particularly with senior staff positions. Uh, I was terribly remiss at the workshop by not introducing our new planning director, Autumn Spear. Autumn, are you still here? Autumn's in the back. Uh, very pleased to have Autumn. We're not.
Though, but so everybody can see your face. I apologize, Autumn.
So Autumn, I think this is uh start of her third week. She really hit the ground running. Um, has been a tremendous asset already to our staff. Uh, really melded well with the existing staff. Super excited to have on board and you'll be seeing a lot of her, I'm sure.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
With respect to the other senior positions that are currently vacant, uh, we do have some uh very promising leads with public works director. We had uh. Productive interviews uh earlier this week. It will make arrangements for um further views with, with staff uh later on next week. So very promising in that regard. Finance director is still an ongoing challenge for us. Uh, this labor market is proving to be incredibly difficult. Not just for senior positions, uh, all positions. And I know I'm a broken record. I think everyone is experiencing the same, but it, I've never seen it in my. Thirty years of, of, of doing this. Um, but we will persevere, I assure you. In addition, I just want to uh offer a couple of thought, other thoughts regarding uh staff positions in terms of recruitment and retention. Uh, we do have a, finally, an employee appreciation event coming up later this month. Uh, this will be. Kind of three years since we've had our last one. So we're very excited to get people back together. And, you know, we feel it ourselves and we certainly see it in our staff and many of you do. Um, you know, the world is different and, and there's been a lot of stressors on all of us professionally and personally. Uh, and you know, what used to be a respite at home i- isn't necessarily the case for whatever reason. So. Uh, we appreciate that the, the workplace is different and uh it's gonna be important for us to reconnect with our staff. And we're looking at uh other things and uh we're starting to circulate some ideas about. Um, perhaps modify work weeks and other ways to really uh find ways to reward our staff in a non monetary way, but really meaningful way. We hope. So uh, we hope you're open and receptive to those ideas as we continue to, to work through them. Um, I should mention that I think members of council are aware and perhaps some members of public, but uh back in August twenty four, fourth, we had a. I'll call it a fire. Fire department did respond. They discharged two extinguishers in the building. There was no flames, but there was a, a fair amount of smoke. Uh, one of the battery backup units in our server you, the room upstairs uh overheated and caused a kind of an electrical. Uh, smolder, if you will. Uh, that, that is a very sensitive room with a lot of expensive and delicate equipment. Uh, luckily, the staff was extremely good about extinguishing uh, you know, the, the incident and, and then cleaning up afterward. Um, we did have to close. It happened about three o'clock on a Tuesday afternoon, I think. And so we decided to close for the remainder of that afternoon, but we're back up and running. The IT staff was tremendous in terms of uh getting all systems back on schedule. And uh, very pleased to report that we did have a uh maintenance uh program with that unit, uh, which has been fully replaced uh under that. So it's no cost to the town and we'll remove with our insurance carrier uh regarding some of the cleanup expenses. So. I, I just wanted to make some public mention of that. Um. Again, kudos to the staff for um quick response and, and thorough response. Uh, for members of council that may remember, I think uh councillor Hammer will remember before as a councillor. Uh, a prior council discontinued a portion of Avenue Two down on Pine Point Road. And this was to allow for the relocation of uh the public path. It's been there for probably a century or better. And to allow uh construction to occur in an abutting lot. Uh, I, I think the pandemic uh delayed that project somewhat, but earlier this spring, uh, the, the building was demolished. And then work is uh, is commenced over the summer months. And we agreed to kind of put off this public path relocation until after the, the summer months were behind us. Uh, myself and the town engineer met with the, 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 the folks today and, and had a very productive meeting. Uh, there'll be some communication out to the neighbors. So I just wanted to provide an update and I'll continue to as we go forward, but at this point, I, I fully expect that we'll be. Um, reporting a, a very positive process and product. I also wanted to take a brief moment and, and brief the council, the public on, um, you may recall over the course of the last twelve or fourteen months. Uh, with hat in hand, Liam and I have come before you and asked for waivers of our competitive bidding requirements three times. And we now are, have a little chance to kind of look back and see what the results of, of that were. Uh, the first time was, was for a fire apparatus. And uh, it was estimated at the time. I have no way to verify it. It was about a hundred thousand dollar savings by taking the route we took. So keep that in mind in terms of savings. Um. More recent, there were two ambulances we purchased. One, we had an opportunity to purchase kind of uh, I think it was a, a demo model or some such thing. Uh, we purchased that unit for three hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. The second unit, we went out to our normal process. Um, the same uh exact to the specifications, uh, ambulance was three hundred and ninety three thousand. So it was a. Seventy thousand dollar savings by that decision. And lastly, most recently, uh, there were four cruisers. We had an opportunity to buy three of them at forty two thousand, which we did. We went through a competitive bid process very recently and have not yet awarded. Uh, but the same unit uh lowest price is fifty thousand at this point. Uh, so there's a twenty four thousand sit dollar savings by the, the three of them. So that's about a two hundred thousand dollar savings by that choice. Again, we do not want to make this practice, but given the unique circumstances of. You know, time delays with supply chain and, and production and such, uh, it made sense at the time and, and uh. I hope you're receptive. I hope I don't have to go back and ask you again, but um, I think it was a wise decision. Tax bills, uh, and you'll hear from the assessor uh just in a moment about the tax commitment, which is a kind of the, the final piece. Uh, to finalizing the tax rate and therefore the tax bills, they'll be going out this week. Uh, due dates are October seventeenth and March fifteenth. And I'm pleased to uh advise on behalf of the town clerk, just at six PM this evening. Uh, we accepted final nomination papers for the various seats. And at this point, uh, there are two council, town council seats and we have two candidates, Karen Shoup and April Seider. For Board of Education, uh, there are two seats and these are three year terms with Carolyn Gammon and Freyla. For Board of Education, there are two seats and these are three-year terms with Carolyn Gammon and Freyla Truckpinion. And also in Board of Education, there's a one-year seat. We have Brian Marur. Can you help me? Marino. And lastly, on the sanitary district, there are two seats. We only have one candidate, Joseph Carroll. So that's a matter that I believe the council may need to discuss in terms of appointing a trustee to fill that that final vacancy. So at this point, the clerk has certified that these petitions are valid and and these folks will in fact appear in the ballot. Lastly, I would be terribly remiss not to just recognize the passing of Judy Roy. For those of you that have followed town politics through the years, Judy Roy was really a tremendous force in this town. Probably through her whole life, but I've known her for the last fourteen years. Just in a nutshell, Judy served on and off twelve years on the town council, one year as chair, a couple of years as vice chair, served on every committee we ever had and then some, I think, was just a tireless worker. I always enjoyed Judy. She she was self-professed historian on council, so she would use the opportunity to take the opportunity to, whether we wanted to know it or not, provide us with deep detail of history. It was always always interesting, I assure you. And also fancied herself a bit of a parliamentarian as well on council. But she certainly deeply cared for Scarborough and Schuldeness.
Thank you for that time. Any questions for the town manager? Okay. Seeing none, item nine is a non-action item. We have our town assessor, Nick Cludier, who's joined us and is going to walk us through the commitment report. Thank you for coming, Nick.
Yeah, my pleasure. As was just mentioned, I'm Nick Cludier, the town assessor. I'm pleased to see a lot of people here tonight. I'm not under the impression you're here to hear what I have to deliver. Assessors aren't generally the most popular people in the room, but I am without joking aside, I am pleased to see you all here because in my three years here as the town of Scarborough's assessor, I've tried to up the level of transparency and the amount of data that's been given to the public. And whenever it's brought to my attention that something new would be of interest, I try to provide it as soon as possible. And this presentation is one such example of that, and I I hope to continue that relationship with the members of the town and the council. So I'll try to be brief because I know you're here for other matters as well, but an overview of what I'd like to present tonight. I'm just going to start with a lot of the general information that's already available on the town website and that's been provided in other resources. And then I'll also talk about, since there is year-over-year value change, where some of that has come from, the sources of the value. And then I'd like to, I'll share a couple of slides on the relationship between what we do in the assessing department and the real estate market and how that occurs and why it matters. And then just the outlook of next year and the years to come and what you might be hearing me talking about when I'm up here again next year. So the general information slide just shows you that on our website, among other resources, like I mentioned, the leader or the newsletter, we try to put out content that is requested and just things we dream up as well that we think you might be interested in, whether it's looking at what other towns have done or what's brought to my attention. It includes a pretty substantial tax commitment report that was included in tonight's agenda. There's also different links on our website, not only to information on Scarborough's assessing, but to state lengths of resources that you might want to look into for sales or deeds, whatnot. Just very high-level overview to start my review of the this past year's tax commitment. The tax rate itself was set at fifteen thirty-nine, and that's a two-point-four-six percent increase over last year's fifteen oh-two. The projected amount at the time of the budget that was approved by council was a three percent increase. So I was pleased to see that it was up half a percent lower. And as was mentioned in the leader article and different other sources, the primary reason for that would be that at the time of the budget, there are estimates used and they're imperfect, so we try to be conservative in those estimates. And the actual values of new value in town outperformed the estimates by a substantial amount. So that nearly all of that difference is passed along to lower the tax rate versus what was expected. And then the commitment date was just a couple of weeks ago. And I put the four-one twenty-twenty-two assessment date, just because, as was mentioned in the last workshop, the the dates that go around for different purposes are sometimes very confusing, like the fiscal year and the calendar year. Yet another thing for the assessing year, it's always as of April first of every year, and that's a state mandate. So we capture values as they existed on April first. So if you were starting a building in January and you're only half done by April first, that building is only assessed at half of percent of completion that year, for example, and then it's a hundred percent the following April first. And then taxable valuation base, it it's nearing the five billion-dollar mark. And that's up a hundred and forty-two-point-five million from last year, which is approximately three percent increase year-over-year. Just a little bit of anecdotal information from other towns I've worked in or even looking at historical data from Scarborough. I think the expected amount is generally one percent, maybe one-point-five percent if a town is growing at an unexpected rate. Three percent is a favorable number because it helps disperse the tax burden amongst more people. And if the more of that percentage is non-residential, like commercial, it's also considered, you know, favorable by many people because it helps reduce the tax burden to the average homeowner. Where does the value come from? This slide oversimplifies that, but it's more often than not, new construction, and that also includes additions or renovations to pre-existing structures, not just brand-new buildings. And that it also includes, like I said in my example of the April first, the building being half complete. Well, as of April first, that building that was half-complete last year is now a hundred percent complete. So that's a lot of the new value as well. Another one that's maybe lesser known is when there's subdivisions of lot, a very large acreage lot is split up into two or more smaller lots, that actually creates more value for tax purposes because the two lots are more valuable than the one as a whole because it's presumed that more can be done with those lots. And then decreases in value year-to-year are generally the same as well. I put abated value. That's when people bring issues to my attention suggesting that they may be overvalued and they prove it to me. I'm willing to work with them, of course. And then year-to-year, some properties can go in either direction, exempt to taxable or taxable to exempt. This year, it was more exclusively the taxable to exempt route for a number of properties, most notably, for example, Scarborough Land Trust acquiring some properties for for preservation purposes. And then I put other on both of those. That's more of a catch-all, and I'm happy to speak to those if people ever want to talk to me personally, but an example could be a demolition of a home would be a reduction, or if somebody brings corrections to my attention that we had missed something or we're out for a permit inspection of new construction and we see that somebody finished their basement without a permit, we suggest they get that permit after the fact and we add it to their assessment roll for the following year. So those are just examples because there are one-off situations that aren't the new construction or abated value situations. This, once again, is just a very high-level overview of the sources of up and down of value from last year that result in that net gain of a hundred and forty-two-point-five million. You'll see the vast majority of that is from real estate, both up and down. The other thing that's lesser known of value is business personal property. We also tax the assets of businesses in town. That generally stays fairly stable. This year, it went up very slightly. The other increases there perhaps are more properly outlined in the the larger tax commitment report with more specifics of where those come from. But it's generally either new construction, land subdivisions, and also when parcels are discontinued and new ones come on board, there's a an exchange of value in those circumstances as well. That's most of what you see in addition to the what I mentioned about reviews and corrections being brought to my attention, both up and down. So this one here is just some of the the biggest, most noteworthy highlights of the last year-over-year, April first, twenty-one to twenty-two in that year period. We already had earlier this evening, the workshop of the downs. So that number, an additional fifty-five-point-seven million of value created year-over-year in the downs this past year was already spoken to. But it's noteworthy that if you're looking at percentages of that a hundred and forty-two million, that's approximately forty-nine percent of the new value that was created in this last year was all within the downs. And over half of that was commercial, approximately fifty-five percent of that fifty-five-point-seven million. And then non-residential, other commercial, but not in the downs. Just a few highlights of large value changes, CMP transport, transmission and distribution and substations, which is reported and inspected annually. And then the Piper Shores Phase Two project that is occurring across the street from their pre-existing project was only started last year, so I I anticipate that will continue to have more value in the next two years to come. And a couple of other notable mentions, Bluebird Self-Storage and North Village Apartments also were only partially complete as of April first, twenty-two, so we'll continue to gain traction next year as well with additional value. And I just a highlight of some of the residential subdivisions, not to belittle the fact that other homes are popping up up in other places of town as well, but those are more concentrated sources of value that we can count on year-over-year that help disperse the tax burden as well. This is a breakdown. It's quite small where I'm looking at it, but even more importantly than the you know, percentages, if you can or can't see them back here or on your screen, is that the takeaway is over the last three years, the the breakdown of residential versus non-residential, which would be commercial, industrial and the business assets. The breakdown has gone more of a swing towards commercial. And and it may seem like small incremental numbers, but when we're talking approximately five billion dollars, I view it as fairly significant that it's happening at all because I would say that most towns, it's the opposite occurring. So yet again, why does it matter? I think it helps not only disperse the tax burden, so the average homeowner is paying less than they would have otherwise if we weren't developing commercial properties. But it also, you know, is a a good contingency for different types of properties, having the tax burden in town, not just all of one type of property. As I mentioned before, we, as assessing department, track not only what people do to their property, split land, build new buildings, but we monitor and help process all transaction of sales. So we're well aware of what houses are selling for. And in fact, we're required by the state of Maine to report on such things annually in quite great depth. So an example here, just of what I'm going to speak to the next slide or two, is assessment ratio, and that's what is the assessed value of your home in this example compared to its sale price. And in this example, if we have a home assessed at four hundred thousand, but then sells for four hundred and thirty-five thousand, that ratio would be ninety-two percent. So we're assessing it less than what the market is saying it's worth for a sale price. And the numbers at the bottom, a certified assessment ratio, that's when the state audits the town or any town. That's what you're allowed to certify at the time of commitment, and that determines what your reimbursements are from the state, among other things. And when you can certify it a hundred percent, that's, in my opinion, optimal because you get all of the reimbursements that you're allowed. And the homestead exemption, among others, are at the full value that is allowed. And that's that number, that hundred percent, it's based off sales period that was audited two years prior. So that first, at the bottom on the left, two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty, the actual ratio of assessed value to sale prices of all the sales was ninety-three percent. And the way the state does the certified ratio is you're allowed to have the actual ratio plus or minus ten percent. So we're allowed to certify it a hundred percent this year because our actual from two years ago was ninety-three percent. The next thing to the bottom right, the following year, twenty to twenty-one, our ratio actual, which we just received a preliminary report from the state, was at eighty-five percent. And I can speak to the change in the market in the next slide or two, but that will mean two years from now or next year, rather, will be the first year in a while. We won't be able to certify it a hundred percent, and I'll speak to what that means for reimbursements and such. I've given more depth on what this is, the ratio of different types of properties in the tax commitment report, which is on the town website and in the agenda packet, so I won't go into too much depth. But what I will highlight is, if you were to look at this same information from last year, it it's been a noteworthy change, and that's primarily due to the real estate market changing quite dramatically, especially in residential properties. And if you just have a pulse on the local real estate market across the whole state and perhaps the country, you'd be aware of that. For example, the average sale price has increased almost by a hundred thousand in just one year's time, and that's approximately seventeen percent increase in one year. But the assessed value has remained the same as the average. And then if you look at the bottom numbers, the ratio is assessed value to sale price, if you had looked last year, that all those were about ten percent higher, so our ratios are going down quickly. And that's to no one's fault. It it is the just the real estate market changing quite quickly, and every town in Maine, to my knowledge, is experiencing similar types of changes in their ratios. I felt that might be helpful, if you don't mind expanding this a bit larger, to show quarterly over the last three-year period what I experience in analyzing the sales, because to show a whole year period to to say eighty-five percent one year doesn't show the totality of the downward trajectory that is very evident by this oversimplified bar graph, but showing it quarterly shows that it's just changing very rapidly, in my opinion. And after the townwide revaluation, last one in two thousand and nineteen for completing residential properties that year, that was done at ninety-seven percent, but that was including eighteen and nineteen values. So at quarter three of nineteen, we were at ninety-five percent. That's quite good. The closer you are to a hundred percent, that allows you to get all your reimbursements from the state and ensures more equity and fairness. You see the downward trajectory of the real estate market changing dramatically in the last years. Shows further reasoning for why we've been discussing a townwide revaluation. Quite honestly, that was already in the works for discussion before the real estate market had changed so dramatically. It was discussed within months of me starting here, that it was desired that it be done more often, so the shifts wouldn't be as unexpected or large. But this just shows the necessity, because the further we get away from a hundred percent, it actually becomes required by the state to do so. So the current trajectory, and I'll speak to this as one of my very last points, is we're planning now to do it two years from now, because in the fiscal year twenty-three budget, I include an agenda item and in the budget packet to explain why I thought it shouldn't be this coming year, but rather two years from now to let the market settle and to prepare accordingly. But the state would actually require us at this rate to do it at least three years from now. So doing it two years from now is pretty much in line with what the state would make us do anyway. And before that date comes, I'll, you'll be seeing more of me and hearing more about what that would look like as we have two years to prepare. And my final slide here is to talk about what we've seen in recent months and what we can look forward to in the coming year and whatnot on the forefront. So state programs that have been in the news lately, one more than the other. I'll start with the lesser-known one. The deferral program was a a program that was enacted a couple decades ago, I believe, but then was discontinued and then was brought back just last year. We only had two applicants this past year and the reasoning for that, I believe, is there's financial, not only thresholds for eligibility, but it it's more or less, if you pass or you want to sell your home, the state needs to be paid back because you didn't pay the taxes, they pay them. But it's kind of a lien on the home if you want to sell or it goes to your heirs. So that's why it's lesser desirability. The very much more prevalent one in public conscious right now. is the Senior Property Tax Stabilization Program. So that one has been very well publicized, both by the town and local media. And uh, the way that one works uh is whatever your property tax bill is that's coming out now, if you're an eligible senior, that's been a at least a ten year homeowner of a homestead in Maine, whether or not it was all in Scarborough, those ten years can be at any time, uh. Then you could be eligible to freeze your property tax bill that's coming out in the next week or two. So that next year, if it were to go up, the state would pay the difference, and you can do that annually to keep freezing that amount if you're eligible. Uh, and it's aimed to help uh seniors stay in their home. Uh, it's been very well received, and uh just to give some examples and numbers, uh, in just the four weeks since it became law on August eighth, we've had over eight hundred and fifty applicants uh deemed eligible. And we have anywhere from forty to sixty new ones every day. It's uh been uh an administrative uh uh difficulty to manage, but at the end of the day, uh, my staff and I uh manage it with as much of a smile as we can muster despite the difficulty, because it's helping local seniors. So it's very much a good thing uh for seniors, and we hope that it continues. Uh, that's uh on the state uh to decide the terms moving forward, but uh, people have asked me, what is the financial impact to the town? And the way the law is written, it is zero financial impact, because the town uh, the state has said that they will reimburse all of the lost taxes uh due to this program to the town. So that's very favorable news, both for seniors and that it wouldn't uh disadvantage other people in town. So uh, we continue to manage that program. There's plenty of information on the town website, including the application, so I won't go into all of it. I've also been able to speak at local uh events and uh communities, including the Hillcrest and Pinecrest Communities, have invited me to speak there, so we're trying to get the word out, and if you know of seniors that may be eligible, uh, send them our way to the assessing office, we're happy to help them. And uh, people have asked me also, what do we think the max uh expected projected amount would be of applicants? And just doing rough numbers based on census numbers of senior head of households versus how many people have the homestead exemption, I think the upper limit would be fifteen to sixteen hundred uh of potential applicants without knowing, because we don't track age. So uh we encourage anyone that's eligible to apply. And then uh the TIF districts, uh, there's been some notable changes since last year. Uh, both in the Higginson Parkway TIF District and the downtown Omnibus TIF Districts, they went from capturing some of the value uh to a hundred percent of the value. Uh, first thing, uh, you also need to, as a town, pay out the CEA credit enhancement obligations, but everything beyond those obligations to developers that were promised, the town gets to keep in separate TIF accounts and use for purposes uh that are deemed eligible by the state. Uh, the real benefit of that is shelter benefit, so you don't lose state benefits that you would have otherwise. That's a gross oversimplification, but the the finances of it are fifty something cents on the dollar saved by the town for everything we can shelter at this point in time, as we're uh the receiver status we are with the state for education dollars as well. And then uh, the New England Expedition CEA uh has just been completed. There was a max limit of paying out that entity, which uh is near um the corner of Hegis and Payne Road. Uh, it's the apartment complexes as well as Cabela's, that whole area. Um, that uh limit of their payout for the credit enhancement agreement was reached. That means all of the dollars captured moving forward, pending any changes to the uh TIF District could be used to pay down a preexisting debt that the town has sooner. And uh, then once that's paid down or paid back to the the town, uh, it can be discussed what will be, what would be done with that. But that is uh nice that up to, I would think, uh, one point three million would be expected next year to flow back to pay downtown debt associated with improvements in that area in past years. And then uh, the townwide revaluation, which I already mentioned, it is uh so far planned for two years from now. Uh, I will be in touch in the coming months and year, obviously, with council to make sure I have as many people's input as possible on what the preferred path forward for that would look like. And I'm sure the path forward will include lots of education to the town uh residents. Uh, and I know that's important, because I have lived here and uh the last time it happened, that was what was said, we wish we had had more time and more information. Uh, and I'm trying to provide both of those things by planning two years in advance and uh starting an education campaign as as soon as possible. And then, as I mentioned before, the certified ratio with the state this coming year will be uh below a hundred percent. So it'll be approximately ninety four percent is my guess, and what that means is the homestead exemption will be slightly lower. Uh, instead of twenty five thousand dollars for each resident, it might be twenty three thousand five hundred. So that would mean uh maybe your bill might be twenty five dollars higher. Uh, although twenty five dollars maybe to one person uh could be a lot, could be less. Um, we want to make sure that when we do the revaluation, we get that back up to the full amount for everybody, because in addition to the homestead exemption uh changing, uh, there's also reimbursements to the town that are reduced by that percentage. So we receive seven percent less reimbursements for tree growth programs uh and uh business exemption programs, among other things. That's all I have for now. I apologize if I wasn't as brief as I had promised, but I tried to be uh clear, even if not concise, and I entertain uh questions, and I hope uh uh, people know that assessors uh are trying our best. And we, like I said at the start, we know we're not always the most popular, but we really do uh try to be fair and try to help you all when you bring things to our attention. So we'll continue to do our best.
Thank you, Nick. Questions for Nick? Councilor, give.
Yeah, just a real quick question. I I don't know if this is possible or legal, or I assume you know the laws. When s- when someone um purchases a home, you have the sale price and then you have an assessed value. Is it possible to take the higher of the two as their assessed value, either use the sales price or use the assessed value?
Yeah, that would be a way to recapture something at a quicker pace. That's uh, that's not uh legal. Um, but no, you're wise to ask that. I I I believe uh, I believe other states do have that, and it's legal in other states. In Maine, uh, it wouldn't be considered legal, because there's uh the the prevalent factor of what is right and wrong in assessing is fairness and equity. So we have to treat everyone the same way. Right now, we're basically assessing everyone with two thousand and nineteen values, because that's when we set our tables for what value should.
Just to comment, I just want to thank you for the work you mentioned that you and your staff have been doing to support the community to sign up for the state stabilization program. I know what you shared has been a lot of work, and so I just kudos to you and the staff for making it work and reaching out to the public. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and I'd also like to thank my staff. Uh, I, in case they're listening or watch this later, I won't embarrass them by saying anything about them personally, but they're very hardworking people, and we've received tons of comments uh about how courteous and helpful they were, and uh we have a great team, and I'm very pleased and honored to work with them.
Now, with that program, you have to process all those applications again next year as well, right?
Yes, and we haven't been given guidance from the state of what that will look like. We would hope it'd be slightly easier to renew versus initially apply, but I think the state is still figuring that out.
Thanks for the update. That was great, John. We're really glad that you're here, and uh and I especially appreciate the spit, the efforts that you um make to respond to um citizens' requests for improvement. So I know uh, you've gotten a couple from my household and been very responsive, so thanks. When you got here, I remember you uh you know, you're so after you got here that you were talking about the possibility of trying to avoid big bang revaluations. So could you revisit that plan? And it does seem to me, especially if we're in an environment where uh, you know, houses are appreciating a lot faster, doesn't it seem like it'd be uh better for the town and also better for, you know, uh, for residents to have more current you know, valuations rather than the pain and suffering uh of a of a big bang? And I remember the one we did with KRT was very painful.
Sure, I'm happy to speak to that. So there's uh pros and cons to uh either doing it every year, if you will, which a few towns do uh versus waiting in incrementally. Uh, obviously, on the far end of incrementally waiting ten years or fifteen years uh is the most painful and also uh perhaps uh missing opportunities to correct inequity sooner. Uh, so uh, based on my understanding of previous discussions with council, uh, the will of the most people, it seemed, was uh not to do it every year, but to do it more often. So my initial proposal, which is uh, you know, a discussion that was uh live recorded as a webinar and is still on the website uh in December of twenty twenty, was uh my proposal for every three years. And uh, the what's changed since then is uh the market is changing so rapidly that you need two years ideally of stable sales to perform an accurate revaluation, in my opinion, uh very well. Uh, you can use just a year, because there are a lot of sales in town, but if you've seen by the quarters uh changing even, uh, i- it would be harder to do so. And then uh, perhaps the most important reason why I I personally have uh viewed the opinion that waiting for the next one since that two thousand nineteen one until uh two years from now, uh, is that uh, as I stated earlier, uh, rushing such an important thing would be the worst thing of all. Uh, so uh, taking perhaps even longer than necessary to ensure it's done right is more important to me than doing it sooner.
Thank you.
Nick, with when we did the last revell, I think it was fourteen years between uh revells. This one's not going to be that long, maybe five, six years. Do you think there'll be less, like, are mar- are, do you, do you perceive that values are going up more uniformly? In other words, if everybody's value goes up ten percent, your tax bill stays the same. It's not, there's not that much disruption. Where the disruption comes in is yours goes up fifty percent, yours goes down ten percent. Do you have a sense for where we might come out on that?
I I can speak to that better as we get closer to that date, let's say it's two years from now. So I'm hesitant to uh give too much uh just off the top of my head, but I do see your point, and I I would agree that if everybody's value goes up just because of the market uh and the uh uh budget stays relatively stable within the, you know, three percent or less increase, that the uh, the pain to people's tax bill might not be nearly as bad as they might think, even if their assessed value goes up, because as I've tried to get across, the tax bill is a function of two things, the taxable valuation and the tax rate. And if the valuation increases in the town by, let's say, a billion dollars, uh, but the budget stays the same, well, that the tax rate goes way down. So the function of those two numbers, even if your assessment, you know, goes up by twenty five percent, your bill might only go up by three to five percent. And that is my hope. Uh, and I'll try to be clear about examples of that as we lead up to two years from now, uh, before people get their bills, because it, I'm sure it can be incredibly scary and uh saddening to see your assessed value go up, uh, you know, by a third or double and wonder, will my bill have the same result? And I would hope certainly not, because as I stated, if all the values go up and the budget stays relatively the same, the tax rate goes down, so your bills shouldn't go up by too much more than what the the uh budget is going up by, for example, maybe a little bit more depending.
You said that very well. Thank you.
I'm sure I'll have to say it again at least ten more times, because it it, yeah, and I'll say it in less words and give diagrams, because it I don't blame you if it's not clear yet, but maybe by the fifth or tenth time I say it and with diagrams, it'll make more sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Nick?
I was just gonna say, Nick, remember this night, I, in thirty one years, I've never had an assessor uh get an applause, so.
Although I have been laughed at before, so that's good. That's the, you know, in a good way, you know. I will remember this night, and please remember that uh, if you had any fond thoughts of me, remember that two years from now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is item nine B, which is another non-action item, Councilor Corner E News Discussion. And I wanted to bring this, I I'm bringing this forward. I I wanted to have a conversation at the council level. Uh, we've uh had a relatively new communication mechanism in Councilor Corner, the newsletter uh in particular. Uh, it started off where we had, uh, you know, we'd assign somebody a topic and uh a date, and they would write an article. Uh, it's progressed more to, hey, this is your date, just just fill it in. We we had a a unique occurrence this past uh week or two weeks ago, whenever the last one came out, where Counselor Hamel and I both submitted an article. And I thought it was worthy of discussion, uh, you know, is that a path that we want to allow and continue? We've gotten some feedback from the public that they enjoy that back and forth, the answer of conflicting opinions out there. At the same time, I'm conscious that it's not a a council medium, it's a town communication medium, and I try to respect the delineation of of our two roles there. Um, so I just wanted to see where the council was at. I I think it it's certainly an option that we could continue down the current path of, you know, you get one. I think Tom has mentioned, maybe there's a separate mechanism that that could be created for counselors that, you know, could, they could use to express their voice at any time. I just wanted to have us all have a common understanding of, you know, how do, how do we want to proceed with this? And it's non-action, so it's just an opportunity to share your thoughts. There's no real rules around it right now. Um, so that's, that's all.
Maybe, maybe I could respond, since I was the the one who broke ranks there. Uh, so I uh read Chairman Clucci's Counselor Corner article on the State Connected Towns Newslink on Wednesday morning, and and I reached out to John Anderson to see if it was possible to offer a counterpoint in a Counselor Corner article. So, you know, I I've made some contributions uh to Counselor's Corner, but oh, my overall contribution to that vehicle has been in general slim, and I'm being generous, so. But though I've been fairly active recently. I did it for a couple of reasons. One is I felt strongly we hadn't made strong, uh, we hadn't made tough choices among our priorities. You know, we've talked a lot about that in the past several weeks around the library and other things. We, we could also talk tonight about some gaps we've been having in terms of staff levels and so forth. And then I just felt generally, uh, you know, there's probably an opportunity for us to to try to build some of these things into our cadence and an operating rhythm as a town council and a staff. So not new themes. Um, and it was a reprise essentially of of an article that I did in May during the annual budget cycle called Decision Time. So you know, I I know that the the chair and the town manager, along with the uh, the Chair of Communications Committee, John Anderson, typically manage the messaging through through this uh and other communications vehicles. So so uh, you know, that, and I know that was kind of the rule, so it was really no intentional violation of process or protocol, but on the one hand, on the other hand, I think we as a council and as a public need to get more comfortable talking about tough issues directly, and so we can kind of work through understanding various positions and try to get to a greater understanding of potential solutions. So so when I ran for council, I didn't really, you know, I didn't turn in my First Amendment rights, and um, you know, I s- I, so I took that as an opportunity to to offer that as a, you know, as an individual counselor's uh point of view, when actually, uh, there's been a lot of and this is probably a credit, John, to both of us, that, you know, there's generated some debate, some some other discussion, so.
Which is probably healthy, right? Uh, you know, I, so I'm not trying to put you on the defensive with with this at all. I, you know, when we're, we fail to be political, then uh it it's really difficult to engage the public, right? There's the, we're not sharing our ideas. So it, I, it happened by accident. I didn't like that you got to read mine. I didn't get to read yours first, but whatever, it is what it is, but I um I I actually think it's a good thing that it happened. Uh, now, would it spiral out of control if 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 that was the rule, that any counselor can submit something at any time? I'm not sure. I don't, I don't really think it would. How's society?
I disagree. Um, so for the Communications Committee, and we kind of ran into this when we talked about Counselor Corner Live. So Communications Committee with John as chair, Ken as the other member, myself, you know, we wanted, we we, we got the council to vote and agree that we were the communications and engagement um outreach, whatever the full title is. We expanded the title and the and the um purpose of the community to expand it to specifically include outreach. Um, be, and and then we had a little bit of a tangle at the council level, because people, some people felt like maybe the Communications Committee was acting unilaterally in some of our initiatives, and so we said, okay, that's fine. We can bring our initiatives back to the council with advanced notice and time for discussion, and then we'll move forward with, you know, Counselor Corner Live topics and dates and things like that. John has done such a good job managing the council. John has done such a good job managing the council, making sure that there is an article in the first and fifteenth newsletter, making sure that we have a submission in the Scarborough Leader and that we've occupied that space with regularity. He checks in with every single counselor ahead of their publication date to make sure that the that they're ready and that they have their submission. Allison, our Communications Director, will proofread and offer editorial help if you get, if we get our stuff to her in time. So all this to say is, it's, it's kind of a mountain of work to do all of that procedurally. And John does it maybe so well and so seamlessly that I just don't want people to take for granted that it isn't the Wild West here. John does a significant amount of checking in and managing to make sure that all of those things happen smoothly. And so I think that I'm not comfortable with this idea that anybody could submit at any time just because then when there isn't something fiery happening, like is it then John's responsibility or the whoever the communications chair is to like chase somebody down again? And so I think, I think I like rules and structure. I'm a rule follower by nature. So I think I would rather us as a council decide like this is the, the steps that we're going to follow and, and not just kind of have it be submit whenever you feel like it.
Counselor Cutter.
Yeah, I, I was gobsmacked, to use an old term, when I saw that there were competing opinions being offered in the Counselors' Corner because having been involved with communications in the very beginning of the development of the Communications Committee, one of the thoughts with having the Counselor Corner was allowing, you know, the various counselors to put forward information for the public regarding topics of interest. It wasn't, he said, she said, and I don't like this, and, you know, back and forth with each other. So I would prefer to see the Counselor Corner stay the way it is. Now, we have all sorts of avenues as counselors to express our opinions. For those of you who know me well, know that I've been one to express my opinion pretty frankly, hopefully, most of the time. We can write LTEs. We're here at the council table. This is where we can, you know, put forth our arguments, whatever. Some people have made use of their social media pages or whatever, but I prefer to see that that particular column, Counselor Corner, not be a place where people are duping it out. So that's my.
I've got a comment, Mr. Chair.
I thought you would. I was just looking over there. Go ahead.
When we first did the Counselor Corner, we discussed maybe pushing it through policies, rules and policies to put some, some guardrails up because we are all just people. But then we decided, well, we don't really need to do that because we don't think there's any counselors that would use that vehicle to push a personal agenda. But maybe that's not the case, and maybe this does need to go to rules and policies because it's not what you say, it's how you say it. If you've got a personal gripe, you can write a letter to the editor. You can even use the Counselor Corner and the leader. But I don't support using that venue for that purpose on the town website. That's my two cents.
Counsel Anderson.
So personally, I feel like we're building a little bit of a mountain out of a molehill. What happened was Counselor Hamel wanted to do something. There was a miscommunication. He got his, his article in there. I can't tell if the concern is the fact that there were two dissenting opinions or that there were two articles at the same time. I feel like this conversation, I'm really uncomfortable with it because I feel like it's bordering the line of censorship and trying to tell people what they can and cannot talk about. And I feel like if we're going to go down that path, that's not something I'm comfortable with. So I, I don't think we should need to create a policy. I think we should be able to operate appropriately, respectfully. And if individuals want to communicate, you know, like Jean Marie said, there's many channels they can communicate. The Counselor Corner is one of those on the E-News. If everybody wanted to do something because they had a topic they wanted to talk about, I don't see why that's a big deal. It's at the very end of the E-News. People have to scroll literally many scrolls down to get to that particular topic. You know, I'd be surprised how many people actually scroll that far down to read these. It was nice to hear some people say today, because we got a couple of emails where people were actually addressing both counselors and their input. So I think it actually was a surprise in that people actually appreciated that and could see the differences between the two. And actually, I think probably liked to see that type of conversation. So I, I'm fine with whatever people want to do at this point. I do not want to manage it. I'm not going to be managing the, you know, I've tried hard to just try and allow people and facilitate to give counselors the opportunity to have a dialogue with the citizens. And I feel like at this point, the way this conversation has gone, gives me a lot of concern about how this council views, you know, the rights of counselors to communicate. And I just, I'm, I'm not okay with that. So going forward, I will not be asking and getting people's input for Counselor Corner. I will not be trying to recruit things for the leader. If, if somebody wants to create a policy on that and rules and policy, you can do that. We can vote on it and that can be the policy. I'm fine with that. But like, I'm not going to continue to push this forward at this point because I feel like, again, the direction in this conversation makes me very, very uncomfortable.
Counselor Sider.
I just want to make clear that I don't, I don't care what anybody says in their Counselor Corner. I just think there should be one. That's all.
So.
Yeah, just for my part, you know, I think we've worked very hard really at the urging of council, but I think staffs work exceedingly hard to publish that newsletter on a consistent basis. We think we've helped drive a good loyal following. We like to think we provide timely items of interest. My only concern, and this isn't to stifle any of your comments, you're all entitled to your opinions, is I don't want that to be diminished, that it becomes an opinion piece. And so that's my only issue in this conversation.
But they are de facto opinion pieces because at the very end, we're required to include the statement that says this is the opinion of the counselor and not the official position of the town or the council. So that's where it is an opinion piece. Whether people try and keep it objective or however they choose to write it, everybody should know that these are opinion pieces. People may try really hard to be as objective into the facts, and that might be their preference in what they choose to write about. But if anybody wants to write on any topic and share their perspective as an elected official, that's my understanding of what this is supposed to be, and that's why we have that. If we just want to put facts and that's what we're doing, then we don't need counselors to write it. That's town staff can send out the facts and provide that information if that's what people want this to be.
Understood and fair enough, Counselor. My only point is there may be a better vehicle for those opinions to be more clearly displayed as opposed to being part of that other communication vehicle.
So then no town counselors should be sharing opinions. So then we should not be submitting Counselor Corners? Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm saying we're starting to go down a different path. And I'm just, I'm just making the point that from staff's perspective, I want to make sure that we preserve the value of that newsletter and we don't diminish it.
And in your opinion, it's diminishing it by allowing two people to share differing opinions on a topic.
It could unless we start to get bounds around this potentially.
Such as?
Well, if every counselor submits an article every week, I think all of a sudden that becomes something different. And I just think there's another way to serve up those informations, my only point.
I think there are other avenues, and I think that's totally appropriate. The leader is, is a great place to do it. We don't need to lean on this. But again, I feel like if we're going to frame what people can talk about, then I guess that's my big concern is that then to me, that starts to get into the line of censorship and that that's where I would just be very concerned if we go down that path.
Counselor McGee.
Yeah, thanks. Just, just so I'm completely clear on this, we're on rotation. Everyone gets a shot at it.
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Right. Yeah. But that was my understanding is that we're kind of all just taking a turn. So I guess I, I like the idea that we all get a shot at talking on a topic that we pick. What, you know, intern, and if somebody sees something coming from another counselor, they should be able to reach out to the counselor who's up on deck and say, can I have your spot? And can I maybe use it for rebuttal piece to what we just saw? But you're still getting one counselor a week doing this thing and you're getting one article. We should be cordial enough to say, hey, I really want to, I'm passionate about responding to what I just saw last week. Would it be okay if I took your slot, switched spots with me? Would that work for people?
Yes.
I mean.
So I think, well, what I was hearing is we were three, three, three were like, go do whatever, and three, just no, just one. And I thought what you just presented or proposed was that, that sounds reasonable. Counselor Catterina.
And that I agree with Counselor McGee. That was basically what I was going to say. You know, you do it one at a time. The thing that was surprising to me was there were two Counselor Corners. And so just do it, you know, this, this turn, you know, maybe I'll write something. And then the next time something's published, maybe Nick was gonna write something, but Dawn says, no way, I'm gonna, I gotta, I've got to write something about what Jean Marie had to say. But keep it, I just think it's one at a time, either that or we just have a whole different format somewhere and not in this particular newsletter.
I think, I think Counselor Johnson's recommendation of sending this to rules and policy and letting them hash it out.
Yeah, I mean, that.
I think that's a fair recommendation to see what they come up with, and then we vote on it and we go there.
And I think in the interim, Nick's suggestion certainly is a good one. And Dawn, maybe me and you will pick a topic and write to the, write to the leader.
Sounds fine.
To do that. Thank you for entertaining that discussion. Next, moving on is order number twenty-two dash zero eight zero, seven PM public hearing and second reading on the requested charter amendments as forwarded to the town council by the Charter Review Committee and to place the charter amendments on the ballot for the municipal election scheduled for Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Such amendments to be effective on December first, two thousand twenty-two, if adopted by the voters. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the charter amendments before us? Seeing none in person and none online, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I guess before we jump to discussion, the, the school board did discuss the amendments that we have in front of us after our last meeting. And they did come back with an expression of support for moving the election to June. And also a suggested amendment that I'm happy to offer on their behalf. And this, and it should be printed in front of you. I've shared it through email as well. But it would adjust section four oh three vacancies where, as proposed by town staff and the Charter Review Commission, it simply delegates to the town council to schedule an election for a vacancy on the school board. And they suggested amending that to read town council and recommendation of the school board, which is shown in really small print and red on the screen right now. But it essentially is just allowing their voice to play a role in that process. So with that, I'd like to offer this as an amendment.
Second.
Okay.
Question.
Yes.
What happens if they say no?
Who?
The board of events doesn't agree with the town council.
So at the end of the day, it's still the town council that has to schedule the
Okay.
next election.
Yeah, having sat on the school board, I think the, the rub, for lack of a better phrase, was just that the town council, without any input from the school board, would select when a vacancy should be filled. And they are seven people and they're elected officials and they might like to weigh in. And so this just clarifies that they would have a role and a recommendation to provide. That's very fair.
Any other discussion? Tell me what you call the role, please.
Counselor Sider?
Yes.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Catterina?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
And Chairman Clucci.
Yes.
Amendment passes.
So we're back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? See now, what'd you call the role, Toby?
Counselor Sider?
Yes.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Catterina?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
And Counselor, Chairman Clucci.
Yes, no problem.
Passage, thank you.
Thank you. Next is order number twenty-two dash zero eight one, a seven PM public hearing and second reading on the order authorizing issuance of up to twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars in bonds of the town to fund the cost of a renovation expansion and equipping the Scarborough Public Library and to place the following question on the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two municipal ballot. Shall the order entitled Order Authorizing Renovation, Expansion and Equipping of the Scarborough Public Library authorizing issuance of up to twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars in general obligation bonds of the town of Scarborough and appropriating the bond proceeds for the project be approved? This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that are here to speak to this item? If so, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. And I see there's a lot of people, so we will be using the three minute clock.
Hello, hi.
Hi.
Nina McKee, three oh nine Black Point Road, number fifty-nine. First, just quickly, that was an awesome report. That was so good. And secondly, I love the Counselor Corner as a resident, and I hope you keep it going because it's really important. And I like it so much. Okay, well, I'm just quickly. We have had a tremendous amount of growth. We all know that in the last few years. And as a result of growth, there is also stress on our, our facilities. So it's a given that the stress on the facilities would mean that there has to be an improvement on the facilities, which also means it's probably going to be an increase in taxes. And this is all kind of mixed together. So I would like to, I hope that the council will really put the library on the referendum because the library has done a lot of work and they are all set and ready to go. The, the school, which is essential, hasn't, hasn't a plan, hasn't a site, hasn't anything. And I don't think the library should be penalized for, for, for having done their due diligence and not being able to go through with it. I would hope that there would be a referendum on the library in November. And then next year, a referendum on the school, which would be all put together in a nice little bundle. Now, I, this is personal. I am not a big fan of the town center, but that's my personal thing. So I really feel that the two essential projects are the school and the library, and that is so important. So I thank you all for putting it on the referendum on the agenda, on the ballot. So thank you so much.
Susan Hamel, Bay Street in Pine Point. We love our Scarborough Library. And it does need to expand. But this proposal will result in one of the largest public libraries in the state and will more than double the annual cost per user from two hundred dollars to four hundred and seventy-six dollars, one of the highest levels of support in the state. Our library has based its case for expansion on the claim that they are one of the smallest libraries per capita in Maine. Their quote continues, even if we more than double our current space, we'll still be below average in size. The state of Maine surveys all libraries across the state and summarizes their findings by population size. Looking at the data, which can be accessed by the public, I was surprised to learn that among all towns in Maine with populations larger than ten thousand, there are only seven libraries larger than twenty thousand square feet, including six larger, larger than thirty thousand. Five of those are in the cities of Portland, Bangor, Lewiston, Brunswick, and Auburn. Some small towns do have large libraries, but there are stories and legacies that accompany them. A good example is Bar Harbor, which just received a five million dollar gift for their planned which just received a five million dollar gift for their planned expansion, bringing their private fundraising to a total of ten million dollars for their twelve million dollar project. Many are in large, old historic buildings. Ellsworth bought an old bank building for three hundred and twenty-five thousand and raised private funds to renovate it. I'm not sure why East Melon, Melonocat has a library of fifty-six thousand square feet with a population of only sixteen hundred people. But the important theme here is that libraries come in all sizes and making comparisons is tricky and can easily be manipulated. What is true is that very few libraries in Maine are larger than twenty thousand square feet and even fewer are over thirty thousand square feet. Another measure collected by the state is the number of registered borrowers per capita, the number of library cardholders. In Scarborough, twenty-seven percent of the population has a card and about one quarter of us. This is very low. In thirteen of the twenty-nine largest towns in Maine, over fifty percent of the population has a card. Scarborough is sixth from the bottom in its percentage of borrowers. This proposal is wrong for this town. The expansion to thirty-five thousand square feet will mean it is one of the largest in the state with a level of support per user four hundred and seventy-six dollars far above other towns. It's not fair to citizens. The proposal needs to be reworked before it goes to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Evening, council. My name is Bill Donovan. I'm the president of the library. I've appeared before you on a number of occasions in the last year, and so I'll be brief. I do want to thank the library, the, the town council. You've afforded us funding to do a very thorough analysis over the last three years. You've also afforded the library the opportunity to make frequent presentations to you to keep you informed. We've appeared before the finance committee in the last three years and given updates. I've given several updates to you just in the last year. We've have a tax impact analysis that the town manager distributed to all of the members of the town council. And it was quite favorable. The finance committee met and reviewed the bond status and found that the library project fits. The town council has also endorsed in the new comprehensive plan a year of a year ago, the expansion of the library. So we thank you for all of the support that you've provided. The, not only has the town council been diligent in pursuing this, but so has the library. We've had a tremendous number of literally thousands of hours of person time spent over the last three years studying this. And, and the library analysis goes back, as everyone knows, to two thousand and six. We've had the architect do an alternate site analysis. And that was presented to the town council. We've also done alternative designs and sizing so as to assess whether this was the right fit. We have kept the community and the town council informed through our website, our newsletters, and through numerous other means. We have a cost estimate that's been updated just in July because of the concerns over inflation. And it's now thirteen point seven million dollars to build the building. And the bond has been set and presented at twelve point nine million. So there's a shortfall there, but fortunately, we've had great success with our first year of fundraising. We're very encouraged. The fundraising people have predicted that we could increase our expectation from two point two five million to three million dollars over a five-year period of time. We've also had the assistance of the town manager in suggesting a memorandum of understanding be developed to be able to help the public and the council feel more confident in some of the little minutia that goes on in how the fundraising monies are to be spent. And we've made good progress, and that's in front of you tonight as a draft. We and I want to make clear that we have every intention of having all of the fundraising money be used to be able to support the bond. We do not want to use any more bond money than is necessary. So that if there is any unrestricted fundraising monies, that money is going to get used as so as to reduce the impact of the bonds. And that was a question that had been asked by several people. And we very definitely intend to include value engineering in our, in our work with the, and we've added provisions to have the town be a partner in, in going through this project. So that we'll have a committee that will be able to carefully evaluate this. And I'll just finish with. Voting has become an important issue in this country in the last year or two. I think it's important at this point to give the public the opportunity to vote. And I very much appreciate what the town council has done for the library. And we continue to expect to have a very strong partnership with you. And by the way, John Anderson's done a great job as, as your representative. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Steffi Cox. My family's on Ashton Street. But I'm speaking to you this evening as the executive director of Project Grace. We're neighbors helping neighbors. I see many of my wonderful neighbors here tonight. And we are here to give our enthusiastic support to putting this bond measure on the ballot. Let the voters decide. You received a letter from us in July with some salient points for why we support the library expansion. You can also find those comments on our website, projectgracemaine.org. But I would like to call attention to you one key element. As you know, Project Grace, we help people when times are tough. We help with oil bills, sneakers for kids, food, you know, the basics, the things we all need. And our neighbors help us to provide that kind of support when it's most needed. The library is a keystone element of how we provide services to our neighbors. Just recently, many people stopped by providing school supplies. Other families came in more quietly, more discreetly to pick up a backpack stuffed like two hands heavy backpacks full of school supplies for their kids. The library is a, is a place where we convene to help one another out. We're also able to help people discreetly by leaving things at the circulation desk or meeting in a room off to one side to, to talk about various things. Our office is a cupboard. There's no room for anybody to meet with us in there. The impact of the library's expansion on our neighbors who live on fixed incomes or who are temporarily without income because of a job loss. This expansion and opportunity to deliver greater services is a net gain for our community. Where do seniors go when the power is out? My dad is in his eighties. He's cold even with the heat on. When the power goes out, he's frozen. Where do people go? When they don't have electricity during a power out or during the Patriot's Day storm? They go to the library. Where do they go when it's, you know, well, for me, eighty degrees, too hot. But when it gets even higher than that and it's humid, where do people go for relief? They go to the library where they are welcomed, whether or not they have a borrower's card. They are welcome to get some relief from the heat, to have a little company, have a little glass of water and to feel refreshed in many ways. And by expanding the library, as our population in town grows, I believe when the, when the library was first founded a hundred and something years ago, there were two thousand residents. In five or 10 years, we're going to have thirty thousand residents. If the power's out, we need a little room to hang out together, and this library will provide that. I won't take up much more of your time except to thank you for hearing us. And I encourage you to put this to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Alberta Follins. We live at thirty-three Arbor View Lane. The library's been waiting for decades, decades for the expansion, stepping aside for other building projects. The library's been planning and preparing for years for this much-needed expansion. And volunteers in the community have been working for months to prepare the the sorry, the wording and the, and the, and what's necessary to get it on the ballot. So this is a really important community place with a lot happening to help people of all ages. Please let the voters decide if now is the time for the expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Peter Hayes, five Union Hill Lane, Scarborough. And I just want to put a little context for, for sort of the members of the audience. I actually had the pleasure of serving, while I'm not sure it's pleasure, served on the council for six years and many of those years as chair of finance. And you heard at the top of this conversations around physical policy and the importance of physical policies. I'm here tonight not as much about the library specifically, but hear more about our strategic planning process and where we are and the fact that it is not compliant with our current physical policy. I am concerned that that creates significant litigation risks for the town. We need, if we have policies, we need to follow them. I don't feel that it's been followed, especially with what's in front of us. So given that, so where I am, in order for taxpayers to make informed decisions about the appropriate priorities of our significant pending capital expenditure, will you please consider postponing the library referendum until the town was able to complete a comprehensive, strategic and capital planning process that addresses so many of the unanswered questions at this point? I know there's been a lot of questions. A lot of them are still not resolved or answered. And, and again, and some of the most significant concerns for me as I look at is the lack of that comprehensive and clearly articulated strategic plan. As recently as the finance committee meeting that happened just a couple of weeks ago, there were several counselors that said they're not even thinking about the school project because it's not in front of them. It's not in the capital budget. Therefore, it's, it's, it's not front of mind. And two days later, in the Portland Press Herald, the headline was Scarborough Needs to Put Back New Case School on Fast-Track Counselors Say. So it seems to me this suggests that there's some significant unknowns to both taxpayers and council members at this time. And shouldn't we postpone these significant capital investments until there's a clearer picture and transparent communication of taxpayer obligations, both current and future? Another, another concern, a significant concern, is the financial modeling that was prepared by the town chair, not outside professionals or the town staff. And there's a widely divergent interpretation of that financial model. Everybody has heard there's, there was a presentation saying taxes would not go up with the three capital projects on the table. And that same model suggests that, in fact, the three projects we're talking about, the school, the library and the community center will cost taxpayers seventy-two hundred dollars more to the average taxpayer, four hundred thousand dollar house over a 10-year period, twenty-five through thirty-four. And that breaks out that the library is about a thousand, the school is forty-five hundred, and the community center is about sixteen hundred. That's seven thousand dollars. So that, so if the two models are correct, if taxes aren't going to go up if we spend that money, the cullery is if we don't spend that money, taxes would go down seven thousand dollars for that four hundred thousand dollar house. So I think it's really, that's, that's a significant nuance that everybody should be aware of as we approach this. Finally, the current analysis is being relied upon, has been not verified by the town staff or financial professionals who have professional liability and litigation protection. Given the magnitude of these decisions, the dollars involved in the town council fiduciary responsibility is to protect taxpayers from a flawed process that is inconsistent with several of our physical policies. A rigorous professional analysis is needed in order to provide taxpayers with clear, accurate and biased information to make informed decisions about their spending priorities. I, in absence of that, of, in the absence of there not being a professional analysis, I would request that prior to voting tonight, the town council asks the town manager to go on record that he has reviewed the analysis and confirms it accurately reflects the town's position and representations that have been made by council members. In addition, confirm that the proposed referendum followed a process that is inconsistent and compliant with all our current physical policies. You just heard from the podium not too long ago that the town had signed off on these documents. I haven't seen that. So I would like to have the town council have the town manager state to the public, so it's matter of public record, that these numbers are correct and it's been done in accordance with a physical policy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Cupple, library trustee. How many agree? Thank you. You've been doing great. Well, keep it up.
Hi, I'm Lucy Lacase, fifty-two Old Neck Road. You know, you hear all of this. I just, please do what Jim asked. The library, it feels to me, keeps getting backburnered for one reason or another. Sure, there are other projects. There, there are always going to be other projects coming down the pike. The school, the consolidated schools, I mean, when our kids went to school with, you know, thirty some odd years ago, we were talking about consolidating schools. We were living in North Scarborough. It was contentious. It's going to be contentious this time. It's not going to be a slam dunk. It's going to be a complicated process. The library, these guys have done such amazing work. It's they've answered all their due diligence, all the questions you've asked, all the questions they've come up with and dealt with it. So let's just give the voters a chance, all of us in Scarborough. We've lived in Scarborough for forty years. And give us a chance to vote on it. It's a great project. Our library, Steffi, you are a star. What you said was great. I mean, it's true. It's an equalizer. The library is an equalizer. It serves all the community, all ages. And so ask you to please give the voters a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Bill Lacase, fifty-two Old Neck Road. I'm very much related to Lucy. Just, just a couple of things. I'm third generation Maine. It's not a contest, but Mainers do think it's important. And I'm also first generation college, and I grew up in a family of seven children in Skowhegan. And frankly, the public library played a very important role for all of my siblings. Because we didn't have enough money to have a large collection of books. We could walk to the library. And I ended up going to college on a full scholarship. And I think it, the library is an amazing equalizer, and it's still an amazing equalizer. And if you Google students and library, if you Google inflation and library, if you, I would rather say senior citizens than elders in light of my age and library, everything you read tells us that we need an adequate library for the town of Scarborough. One other thing, and we're not here to ask you to approve the building of the expansion. We really are just asking you to put it out to the voters. And I think you have to trust the voters. After all, they put you here. And I think we need to trust them to let us know whether they think the money and the taxes are being reasonably spent on something that they use. So anyway, I would also ask that you put the expansion on the ballot. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Celeste Shene, Nine Hampton Circle, and thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the referendum. In the late nineteen nineties, I served on the Friends of the Scarborough Library Board and Board of Trustees, and I worked as the library expansion, previous library expansion efforts campaign manager. Following the failed referendum, I joined the staff in a newly created position as programming and development manager and retired in two thousand twenty, just in time for COVID. So my comments are based on firsthand knowledge. And I, I just want to mention in response to some of the statistics that Sue shared, and thank you for doing your homework on that, Sue. But I have to say that cardholder and borrowing statistics are just a very, very small part of what the library does. There are so many aspects of, of the service to the community that are difficult to quantify. So I hope you won't I hope you won't consider those statistics alone. My former colleagues are dedicated caretakers of the library, its building, its contents, and the visitors who cross its threshold. Priority has always been given to adapting the public space to create a welcoming and functional environment, a challenge for a building constructed for a population of twelve, twelve thousand and before the introduction of computer technology. Behind the scenes, interlibrary loans are processed in a high-traffic area shared with office equipment in a space not much larger than a small galley kitchen in a Manhattan apartment. Several offices are located in renovated storage rooms or closets, some with computer servers humming in the background. Library materials are processed on a table that would seat four to six people in your kitchen. Collapsible computer tables are stored in the center of the workroom until needed to create makeshift computer labs for training. This is reality, but the staff made it work. In my last year, the library offered close to four hundred programs for all ages on a budget of two thousand dollars, all free and open to the public. The meeting room was also used close to three hundred times by community organizations. It was common to, uh, for us to turn the room over three to four times a day. And the capacity of the meeting room was challenging, but it didn't deter us. Uh, if a larger audience was anticipated, Plan B was to move all the bookcases and furniture in the center of the library, bring in seating, then convert the space back. And I just have to add, some of us did that in heels. Our library is highly respected at the main state, New England, and American Library Association, Association levels, and members of our staff have served on state, regional, and national library committees and have presented at professional conferences, including at the American Library Association level. The library has been invited consistently to participate in arts and humanities programming, supported by the National Endowment for the Arts and the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences, and has facilitated programming partnerships with organizations at the state and local levels. I'm blinking red, but I promise I just have one quick, one picked paragraph to wrap it up. Keith Sherburne was president of the Friends when I joined the board. He was a retired educator with dedicated, with a dedication to lifelong learning and a commitment to our library. He called it Scarborough's Community Center for the Mind. Those words informed my work. Our library is a community center for the spirit, the heart, for social engagement, civil discourse, parity, equity, diversity, inclusion, for free and open access to information regardless of means. The library has served the community on a challenging footprint. But that challenge never compromised the integrity of the work and the commitment to serve. With a population of twenty thousand and growing, that is simply no longer sustainable. I hope you'll support placing the referendum on the ballot. It's well-deserved and it's time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Should I wait for the green light? There you go. Richard Hayes, Martin Avenue. Uh, I promise I won't get to the red light. Uh, I just asked that, that this proposal be set aside until all of the impacts of the school and whatever's going to happen at the Downs with the town center can be made public and the costs of all of the projects go to the voters at one time. And let, I have no issue with the voters deciding. I just would like them to have the entire picture. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Could I wait for my green light before? I'd like to, uh, make a tribute to, um, to, to Ms. Roy, who, uh, invited me, who challenged me. If I really wanted to make a difference in the town, I better get on the council on that side of the desk. And I sat next to her, and one of the first things she said to me at my very first meeting, this is how you do it. You do the best for the most with the least. And I took that to heart, and I might revisit that in my speech here today. So Kate Verduis, five Camper Down Elm, I've been here before. But I'd like to thank you for your consideration of, of sending this, and I urge you to send it to the voters. But I'm gonna have, I'm gonna review, this is my little talking point. I'm gonna review the history. I would remind you that the library expansion has been on the table for more than a generation. More than a generation. There is one thing on the table, and it is the library. There are two things on the uncertainty timeline. The library is not one of them. So far from being rushed, I would suggest that this project has languished. And that is not a reflection of the merits. That is a reflection of the fact that in this town, things generally move glacially. But in the fullness of time and with astonishing patience, the library is finally at the front of the line. And Jerry Garcia said, it's a long, strange trip, but we are here now. So in the eighties, we designed room for the expansion. Then it's been, the expansion's been included in the comprehensive plans. It's been included in the CPI budgets. It was in the facility study, and as I mentioned last time, of the high-profile, high, the, the projects that were required immediately, only the library remains outstanding. So it is time. So to call this new is, it, this is only new if old is new again. This is not new, and it's not rushed. I'd also like to tease out the library narrative because it has been tangled in with two, I'm sure, worthy projects. But it doesn't belong there with them. It stands alone. As I stated, it's been on the drawing board for more than a generation, and over the last three years, with gratefully received, vigorous town support, the plan has done its due diligence to bring a plan forward that is, in a sense, essence shovel-ready. I know that the full architectural drawings aren't finished, but it would be irresponsible to develop them without certain funding, and this is standard for the industry. And so a big thank you for that. So let me just quickly say, where are those other projects? How can we be compared to them? They are on an uncertainty timeline. We don't know really where they are. They can't, uh, be concrete in terms of costs. They're both conceptual. And I'll just jump ahead before I, I see the light, I'm gonna just jump ahead and say lumping these three projects, so that the library becomes part of the school and swimming pool uncertainty timeline, is nothing more than a tactic to defeat the library without actually owning up to it. And ditto requests for additional information. On a more positive note, the library has consistently acted in good faith to provide the council and staff with any nor requested materials, ever mindful that the need to be good stewards of the funds entrusted to it, uh, be made. So mindful, good stewardship of funds entrusted is the promise that the library is making to the citizens of this town. And in that spirit, I ask that you send this to the voters in November. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any participants online that have their hands up? Uh, without a closing public hearing, and do I have a motion?
Second.
And discussion. Okay, I, I'll, I, I don't mind starting us off. I, I'm sure there will be some, uh, so I, there's been a lot of talk about the library and other projects, and I, I think a rational question is, when is, when are you ready to ask the voters if they support a project? How much money do you want to spend before you ask the voters if they support the project, right? And we have some parameters to follow. Our charter allows us to spend up to four hundred thousand. We spent three, we're authorized three hundred and seventy thousand on this. Um, with that money, we've evaluated multiple sites, uh, selected one, drawn up conceptual renderings for the proposed structure. Um, we have not taken the next leap of actually dr- doing architectural plans because we want to make sure the voters support project before you spend that kind of money on it. Uh, so for me, this is purely procedural. They've had multiple councils support funding to attain each of those steps. And now it's time to ask the voters if they want to do it or not. And if they don't, then we're gonna move on. If they do, then we're gonna try to figure out how to work it into our capital, you know, our, our financial plan. Um, that's all that's before us right now, is, is, do we want to ask the voters if they support this project or not? So I, hopefully I stimulated some other discussion. If not, we can move to a vote. Councillor.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I mean, my initial thoughts on this are, it, it's clear. I've, I've torn the, uh, taking a tour of the library before. They need more space. I, uh, can't dispute it. How much space, I think, is what you can start to get into as far as discussion points, right? So, um, I, and I know I was a little, um, late to the process on, on this specific item, but I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there was a request at some point for an alternative design on the library or sizing perhaps, and just never provided. Is that fair statement?
Uh, I cannot answer one way or another. I know that personally, I asked them to evaluate an alternative site, and they did. And they wrote a report and provided it to the council.
Not necessarily site, but size?
Uh, I don't know what, uh, so I don't know that it's been asked or offered. I don't, I just don't.
Long story short, um, I think the, I've, actually I have a clarifying question before I continue on. Is there a reason why the MOU is a separate line, agenda item from this vote?
Yes.
Yeah, this matter is specific to the ballot language only.
Okay.
The memorandum of understanding would be a separate, it needs to be a separate council action. And in terms of scheduling on the agenda, old business comes before new business.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make it simple. I have a, I have an amendment. Uh, and my reasoning is this. I, I think, uh, ten million dollars is a good start to an addition in a building, and I think they have the ability to raise more money privately. I don't want to handcuff them and box them in with, uh, two-point-two-five to three million. If they can raise more or need more, great. I hope they do. And this is the only reason why I asked about the MOU is because the, in its current format, I believe that, that MOU would handicap any additional fundraising over three million dollars. Um, and I, and I believe that was because it all goes back to the bond, paying down the bond. It's great in concept. But what happens is, as soon as they reach that three million dollar level and, and fundraising, there's no more solicitation for those, for, for those donors. And what's the impetus for them? The, the pitch to the donor is, oh, we've already exceeded how much we can raise for the library. This will just go back to pay that taxpayer. Probably not a great pitch fundraising-wise. So I'd rather remove the whole how much they're gonna be required to fundraise and when they're gonna have to do it by. Make this clean and simple, a straight ten million dollar, um, bond. And hopefully, if they raise more money and they want to put a pizzeria on the back of the place, great. If they don't raise enough, then maybe they'll lose part of their parking lot or have to rethink the size of their next meeting space as they go through the designs. That's, that's my reasoning behind it.
So just to be clear, are you, are you offering up a motion?
Ten million dollars instead of the twelve-point.
So to amend the twelve-nine-three-eight to ten million. Okay, and also just to be clear, up to this point, this was not a budgetary matter. Because we're, we're now changing the number. Uh, it, it is, it is, I, I did run this by legal before, and it is allowed. Um, so you can change the number. So, uh, with that, there, there's a motion to amend twelve-nine-three-eight-nine-nine-five to ten million. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know procedurally, uh, if this is something that we need to just vote on as it was put forward, or if there is an opportunity for us to consider other aspects of it. Because I support the concept that Councillor McGee has put forward that, um, that I, I don't think the library has really seriously considered anything other than Plan A. In fact, we've had close to that effect. You know, we're going, we only get a chance to do this every thirty years, and we're going big. And I haven't seen this project change in any way in terms of scope in any significant way. So I agree with that concept that, uh, you know, let's accept the library needs some, some improvements, but to the tune of, uh, of thirteen million dollars, I don't agree with that. A lower amount I would agree with. But I, I wouldn't agree to that without other, some other conditions, including a chance for us to evaluate the questions about, um, the fiscal aspects of this, so that I know we touched on in one meeting. I think we really touched on it in one finance committee meeting, and then there was back and forth and some, whenever we got to the FAQs, but there was basically email traffic after that. So I, I really don't think that we've done our job as, uh, as counselors and, and our role as fiduciaries for the town. You know, and you could argue that maybe we're rusty on that in general, but we're, we're at a different point in time, and we're not doing this issue in isolation. So I, I'm, support the, the concept that Councillor McGee's put forward, but without the scope of this changing and also the timing of this changing, to give us the time to kind of study it further, and even possibly putting it out there, you know, in June or, or November of, of next year, so we have a chance to kind of look at these other projects that are coming forward. I'm, uh, in its current form, I, I really don't support it. So that's sort of a long-winded question and statement, but I, you know, would appreciate your, your feedback in terms of, you know, how to, how to process the, the initial motion.
So that's what we're, so it was made and seconded, and now we're discussing it, and we'll call a, a vote uh, once people have said their piece. Councillor Ketterina?
I absolutely do not support, uh, this amendment. We'll be voting against it. Um, I would remind people that number one, what we're doing tonight is saying, we'll list go out to the voters and give the voters a chance in November. And secondly, it's up to twelve, that, twelve thousand, I was gonna say, twelve million nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight-nine-ninety-five. So, you know, part of me wants to be a wise guy, imagine that, and say, whoa, why don't we just close the library? Why don't we just say, why don't we put out the voters, let's just close the library and save the town all sorts of money, because no one reads books anymore. And we don't want people reading books because we need to ban certain books because, you know, it's not good for kids, and I could go right down that road, too. Not that I would, if, for those of you who know me, I'm being smart. You know what, here. But, um, I think that, you know, they've done their due diligence. I couldn't disagree more. Um, that, you know, let it go to the voters. I've said it over and over and over again. The voters in Scarborough are not stupid people. You guys are not stupid people, no matter which side of the aisle you're on. Um, so let's let it go out, see what happens. You can start your campaigns tomorrow and see what happens in November.
Councillor Anderson?
Yeah. So two things. One, I, I am the, um, council liaison to the library trustees, so there's a lot of time, information shared in there that doesn't always make its way to the council, because I think it's more draft-in-the-works conversation. But I do recall one meeting, um, where there were options that were considered in terms of square footage. So it's not that the library did not do their due diligence to kind of look at different options. I think the trustees ultimately decided which option they felt like was best. That was gonna meet the needs that they felt were important for this expansion. And from what I recall in that conversation, you know, financials, like the financial impact was a, a factor, but not the only factor that led to kind of their decision for what's before us. So I, I do want to say, I know that work is there. I think maybe something that they can do is share that with the councils, so that the council can see, um, you know, what was considered and ultimately led them to the recommendation. Because I think ultimately what's before us is an ask by the library and the trustees to plead their case to voters, whether this is the right library, um, expansion project that voters are willing to support. That being said, I do understand how some people look at this and think, you know, the thirteen-point-seven is, is a pretty big ask. And I do worry, an ask of that size in this current environment may be a risk and a gamble that the library and the trustees are taking on. But I think they know that, and I think they're willing to kind of put in the work and the effort to, you know, educate the public on why this is a need. Um, I do think, uh, you know, They're committed to really invest. You know, time, energy and effort to raise. Up to three million dollars to support this, which. As I understand is unprecedented, unprecedented in terms of other groups trying to raise funds to support a capital project. So I, I feel like we're not giving them enough credit for, for doing that. And considering that as part of this particular project, we've gotten caught up a little bit and knows that enough, is that not enough? Again. They probably could and will do more. My hope is, and so hopefully that will help. In the future, but you know, again, I, I personally feel like. As Jean Marie said, the real ask here is. Have the trustees done their work to be able to plead their case to voters if they want to support this? And I think that's, that's the primary question. In my mind, as, as all this moves forward and even thinking about the particular amendment. The other piece I would say is I know a lot of our fiscal policy stuff has come up. And, you know, I, I know myself and a lot of the people on the council take our role. Managing fiscal policy very important and we got a really great email today that outlined. Some concern areas. I spent a lot of time today. Looking at our fiscal policy myself to, to get comfortable with, did we do our due diligence? And I think. As I look at our fiscal policy, just sharing my perspective. I think there's still a lot of. You know, it could be interpreted, I think, in a few ways, and I think there's work to be done to tighten it up so that there's less interpretation, because a lot of the areas of concern. From my perspective, were really around the issuance of the bond itself and what needs to be done before. We as a council authorize the issuance of that particular bond, not. Is this appropriate to go to voters? I think from a debt perspective, that's my interpretation of the policy. And that's where I would say from a debt management perspective. We have work to do to follow that policy if this is approved and if, and when we decide to issue debt. The other piece though, that I will add that I do think. For me, I will own and say, maybe perhaps we didn't, we could do better is with the C I P. Where this year in budget planning, you know, we did ask the school at the. At the school meeting where they presented their budget. Why they did not include an estimate for. The schools and the C I P. And whether it was the right thing to do or not the right thing to do. I think the reality was they weren't ready to provide a number and their concern, which I think is valid, is if they provide a number. They will be stuck with that number and anything that would change, they would, you know. Be held accountable to and get pushback on. Which I think, you know, is somewhat of a valid concern. They wanted to be accurate. They felt like precision was very important and needed the time to get precise before they wanted to put something out publicly. Could we have put in an estimate? I think we could have, could we have pushed them harder for an estimate? I think we could have. I know. Since then, we have been pushing them along with the school board, who has been very antenna and trying to get that one hundred and thirty five million dollar estimate out, which. Is still just an estimate. It's their best guess based on. Some of the other schools that they've seen that fit this project. So that number. Will change, it will evolve. We will need to study it further and evaluate it. Along with all of our other capital projects, but I, I feel like in terms of where we are right now, we've done our due diligence. Fiscally, to our greatest extent possible with the information that we have. But again, that's like a separate topic when really, really the primary question is. The trustees would like this to go to ballot to ask the voters if this is something they're willing to support. They've done their due diligence. I'm comfortable, at least at this point. Allowing them that opportunity, because then it's really on. The trustees and the campaign that they're building to convince the public that this is the, the right investment for the town.
Councillor Seither.
So to go back to Nick's amendment, because that's technically what we're supposed to be discussing. And I have some other comments after, so I want to discuss Nick's amendment and then I would. Like the floor again. So I, I appreciate the spirit of the amendment. I think it. Is responsive to some of the sentiments that I have personally expressed along this long process that I just wasn't comfortable with the bond amount. Regardless of that, here we are tonight. Second reading, the bond amount is what it is. They've put their request in, they've. Made it clear to me on multiple occasions now that this is what they want to try and sell to the voters. I have a lot of. Difficulty with the process that got us here and I'll speak to that in just a second. And so. For that reason, I can't support the amendment. Just because I, I feel like. That even takes me even farther off from a process that I'm comfortable with, so.
So with that, Tony, would you call? The role on the amendment of this.
Councillor Seither?
No.
Councillor Anderson?
No.
Councillor Hamill?
Yes.
Councillor Caterina?
No.
Councillor Johnson?
No.
Councillor McGee?
Yes.
And Chairman Clucci?
No.
Motion fails.
So now we're back to the main motion. Councillor Hamill?
Yes. Yes, thanks very much. I, did I? You are, you sure? I, so let's talk process for a minute. Okay, so I mean, I. This is the slogan and thanks for bringing the science, by the way, and I don't know if you're allowed to do that, but look, we won't make you take them away. But. Yeah, let the voters decide. Okay, it's a great slogan. Of course we'll let the voters decide, but we can't let the voters decide. Unless and until we do our jobs as councillors. Why are we here? Why did you put us here if we don't take? Take the steps to make sure that's done. And if we are claiming. That we have done our due diligence fiscally, that is just, I'm sorry, I don't. I, I don't see that in any way. We haven't even implemented our financial policies yet. I mean, they may be approved, they're maybe on paper, but we have not. And I, I, I was probably part of the reason why they didn't. I was. You know, we tried to get this stuff done. We never were able to make it stick. Your haze was doing, doing the same stuff as well three years ago. So, yeah, that, that's on us and I, I take, you know, my share of the responsibility for that. But because we made omissions and mistakes, that doesn't mean that entitles us to do that again and again and again. And we are at a different point in time here, I think, in terms of how we look at money and how we're spending resources and how we function as a town. So if, if we're going to continue to make. Quick and easy decisions about amounts of money, you know, in the tens of millions of dollars, then, then I think we are really going to have a hard time. I, I am proposing three things that be added to this. And I wanted to thank the work that Bill Donovan and others have done to. To detail out some conditions around construction costs and project costs, you know, detail out how private funding is going to be used.
So that, that I believe you're referring to the M O U, which is going to be later in the agenda.
Okay.
Right now, we're just, correct, that will come up again. Right now, we're just doing the ballot language.
For the.
For the library.
So I have. Order twenty two oh eight six.
This is order twenty two oh eight one.
Okay.
We will get there hopefully. So the memorandum is, is a completely separate item. That's defining the relationship between the library and the town. This is, what question do you want to ask of the voters? And there's a lot of.
Yeah, I'd like the amount to be zero. Okay.
Sure, I, I get it.
I would make a motion that, that we. We put in a number of zero and that, and that one that's before us and we go from there.
So are you making that motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Too many amounts of zero.
I say we, you know, push the reset button.
Okay. So no second. Councillor Seither. And then councillor Anderson.
I, I, I really would like to get. An opinion from Thomas was requested, just to kind of really be clear on. Have we followed our fiscal policy up to this point for what we need to be doing in order to. Be at this stage of this in terms of bringing this to the voters, because. It is the town manager's responsibility to enforce our fiscal policy. That has been brought into question. I think that's a valid question.
It's a difficult question you're asking me. The fiscal policy is quite extensive. I would say. We'll probably do for, we certainly do for an update, but I think through a number of different means in terms of. Our facilities plan, understanding what our, and appreciating the kind of long term capital plan and needs of the town. Again, that's a bit dated, but I, I think we've worked through that systematically. Frankly, this project was prominently part of that document some years back. Our fiscal policy, as you mentioned earlier, I think many of the points that were raised this evening really relate to the decisions around the actual issuance of bonds. That's a decision that will come back before this council. I suspect we will use finance committee to work through and understand what those options are. There are a number of reporting requirements that I think, and I'm prepared to actually advance those at the next finance meeting. You know, we did drop off last year, but we started, I think in, in two thousand and twenty. And we're, we're due for an update to providing. Those dashboard metrics, if you will, and there's also a fund balance piece that requires reporting. So I'll be in a position at your next finance committee meeting to do that. I don't have any concern that what matter, the matter for you this evening is going to jeopardize and put us in any perilous position. When you consider multiple other far more expensive capital projects, I think those are very important considerations that need to be made, but I, I don't have any concern that they will be. At all in jeopardy as regards this project.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I've stalled long enough. So. I don't even know where I want to start really, but. It's not a surprise to anybody that I'm still struggling. We're right up to the wire here now and I'm gonna. Be. Visibly challenged by the vote again tonight. That's okay. But. I do want to talk a little bit about. Why I'm struggling so much, I guess. And I don't know if I feel like I need to explain myself or whether I feel like people care. I don't know. But I do think that we have. Really. Not done a, a good job or not done any of the projects that get tossed around. Justice, because we have lacked process in being able to bring these things forward. And that is something I'm having a really hard time with because I understand the library is ready. They are. They have done their due diligence. I've said it every time they've come before us. They've answered questions. There's always going to be more questions. There's always going to be more analysis that can be done. I can appreciate that from both sides of every issue. The problem that I have is the school and the community center and the library, none of these things are hypothetical. And the council has known that long before I even sat in this chair and we've still just kind of allowed things to progress. At their own pace. With no set guardrails or guidelines for how to get to this moment. And I'm speaking from experience as someone who sat on the school board who wasn't even sure how to get a project. You know, in front of the council, we had a workshop that was a colossal failure. I know some of us overlapped during that time. Where we, the school board, the full board and the full council tried to meet to discuss the needs of the school. And basically, at that time, the school board. Sorry, the council exercised their authority to say that they didn't have the bandwidth to listen to the school project. And that was the extent to which the project was limited was. Was basically just the opinion of the sitting councillors at the time. And that's, I understand that's the nature of the process. And that these seats turn over for a reason, but I feel like everybody's playing by a different set of rules. And I don't understand why as a collective body, we are not. Holding ourselves accountable to have a more meaningful discussion of how we are going to plan all of our capital. Investments at one time. And, and figure out a process for how we can bring these things forward collectively together so that they are all going to be successful. There's not a single part of me that doesn't want the library to be successful. I want the school to be successful. I want the community center to be successful. There has to be a way that we can. Have those meaningful conversations and instead we end up having a workshop for one project. Where inevitably the other projects get mentioned or brought up or dismissed, and then we move forward to the next step again. And we've done it. Three, four times. Where the library has had a lot of airtime to come before us and, and. And I appreciate the questions and. But I just don't necessarily think that we as a council are functioning in a way that is. What is best for the town. And. So from a process standpoint, I'm having a really hard time accepting that because the library is ready, that procedurally somehow I'm, this is just a yes. That they've checked all the boxes and we should send this to referendum now, knowing that this is not the only issue that's in front of us. And I, I. I still, I just can't put that. Part past me.
So. Comment on that a little. So a couple of years ago, you're right, it, I think the school projects have been simmering. And I wasn't on the council when that assertion was made, but I did support funding to flesh out that project further. It, I think on two separate occasions. And so that money is there and I, I think we. That funding was approved by a prior council because I wasn't the one that approved the library funding. Maybe I did one of the, the tranches, but. You know, I, I think that's the way it works is essentially. You allow the project to flesh out the details a little more, but I don't view my role as a councillor to tell the school department. What they need to build or how, what it needs to look like. I can provide funding so that they can come back and, and tell us what, what they need. Essentially, and then. Another council could say, no, you have to, you know, there's a back and forth that goes on there. The fact is, the library's gone through that back and forth. And they're at the point where. You have to ask the voters if they want to do the project. The school department isn't that, the, the, the school project isn't at that point. I, I think typically. And it's not uniform. It's pretty typical though, is you, you pick a site. And you do conceptual renderings and plans, and that's about when you want to ask the voters if they want to do the project. And then if they do, you try to figure out how to make it work with your finances. If they don't, you move on to something else, but you don't spend more money than you need to, to flesh out the details of the project. Councillor Caterina.
Oh, in memory of Judy Roy. I have been on the council for quite a while, a long time. And I can tell you that, yeah, and, and I was involved when the school. Came before us and as I've said. Many a time, I'm, I'm a huge supporter of schools and kids and doing the right thing by them. But I have, we haven't seen any plans come forward from the school board that's, that's, we can act on at all. And. You know, the longer you're on the council, there's always something, there's always something, there's always something. We do the best we can. With planning. And I think one of the speakers who was a previous town councillor. I thought she did a great job outlining all of the years that the library's been trying to get in front and. I know in my experience on the, on the council. The last time they get shunted aside, so to speak, was because of the public safety building. And they were willing to wait. And again, I can't emphasize enough, I am not sitting here making a decision. What Jean Marie Caterina thinks about whether or not. The library should build. An addition. I'm making a decision, is this going out to every voter in town to make that decision? And that's why I'm comfortable doing that.
Councillor.
So I, I agree with some of the statements that councillor Seither said, you know, again, when I look at. You know, our process today, our process is really the budget process and the C I P, when we go through that process. Could we do a better job, you know, putting more rigor behind how we go through that and the budget process? Absolutely. I think that's an important mechanism we have that exists today that we could rethink, what do we need to do to make sure that we're having. Bigger strategic conversations long term about priorities from a policy perspective and make sure. How we're timing and funding things and the C I P aligns with that. That is our responsibility. That is within our control. And so I think. We, we had an opportunity to do that this year. And again. I looked at it as this C I P is one that I support because I'm supportive of the library at this stage. Going to the ballot given, and that was their request and, and the budget this year. I do think, just though, in terms of general long range facility planning and making sure that we're making good capital strategic decisions, we do have an opportunity as a council to do that. We tried to set a goal this year as a council goal around focusing on the schools and on the community center. We did not specifically call out the library. We did not specifically call out the library. I don't know if that was an indication of our values at the time, but it, you know, I think we've met that goal by Counselor Seither and I participating and the Board of Trust, or the School Committee. We've had the School Committee recently come and give an update. With the Community Center, we agreed to fund, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to further study that, to help us decide what we want to do. So I mean, I think we are doing it, but we can definitely do better. You know, even in our long-range facilities plan that was done in two thousand sixteen, we deliberately excluded the schools in that, just reference that they have their own long-range plan, which not being part of the council at the time, but being where we're at today, that feels like a little bit of a misstep. Where, again, that plan probably should have been townwide. And I'm sure if it was, the schools would have been, would have been incorporated. And I don't know if the library would be where the library's at right now. So again, I just think, I think we have a huge opportunity process-wise to do better. I'm committed to do, doing that and working with the council to kind of make that happen as part of Finance Committee or wherever is the right appropriate place to do that. But at this, at this point, we're kind of at where we're at. We don't really have that plan. The question is, do we hit the pause button now when the library is ready to go? And do that? And are we committed to do that so that it doesn't take forever? Or do we let this go and then continue to work and do a better process? That's kind of where my, my head is and how I'm kind of thinking about this.
Counselor Ricky?
Thank you. It's great hearing all of the thoughts up here and from the audience, of course. I, I do love the idea of planning, right? It's a great idea and concept. You're going to sit there and you're going to take these projects and we're going to, we're going to make them all work. And hopefully they fit into a budget and a schedule and a timeline. And then we can go bang, 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 right down the line and it all makes sense for everyone. And I really love that idea. It's awesome. I just don't see us getting there and for a couple of reasons. And, and I don't know how long it's going to take to plan a school. I don't know how long it's going to take to plan a community center. I don't, I don't know where those fall in on the Downs' GMO exempt timeline. You know, there's a whole host of things that really skew how we look at the long-term planning effect. And trust me, I want a long-term plan more than anyone else here. It's just, I don't know if we're ever going to get to a point where you feel so comfortable that you, you're going to be like, great, we've got the plan, let's go ahead. You still got to get it over to the voters and you still have to convince the voters it's a worthwhile plan. And we could find ourselves spending time and years and, and so much town resources, planning this thing out so right down to the T and then having it knock down on the first ballot. So for, for me, I really want to plan. I really hope we can do a workshop with a CIP plan and start to talk about this stuff. But is it worth holding up a vote? I'm not convinced it is. Now, what I will say though, is I think the library is gambling and taking some risks here. It, it could be the size of their building or the amount of money, which I just tried to help and solve for a little bit. I'm sure some people read it differently, but you, you know, whether it was the size of the money, that there will be a host of arguments to be made in a public realm, right? And, and I think that for me, that's okay. People are going to go out there and say it's too big or it's, you know, it's just the right size. Let that debate happen. Because I don't know if we're going to get this a whole lot better six months from now or one year from now. And that's kind of where my head's gone. So, thank you. That's, thank you for your time.
Okay. Counselor Slither?
Me. Thank you. I have a question about communication and distribution of information. And so, and this is not, this is, I'm, I'm, this is not a rhetorical question. So the other piece of this that I've been struggling with is it, it recently has felt like it has been the council's duty to make sure that the voters are informed about the decisions and about making proper financial decisions and making sure that, you know, and, and the word fiduciary responsibility gets thrown around a lot. Whose responsibility is it to make sure that the voters are informed? Because we're sitting here tonight and I do not know the mill rate impact of a twelve point nine million dollar bond. And I'm the Finance Chair for the Town Council. And so that, this is, if that's not our responsibility and that's the library's job to have conducted that analysis and then communicate that analysis to the public, then that's fine. But if it was the council's job, or if it was the Finance Committee's job, or if it's the town staff's job, I just, I need to know like where this information is supposed to be generated and who's going to distribute it so that if, if this is something that is my responsibility, that it's clear to everybody that I know what I need to do.
Can I take a stab at that? And Tom will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe according to our financial policies, that the responsibility for that is the Finance Director. We don't have one, okay? And failing Finance Director, I think it would revert to someone on, on town staff, probably the town manager. But it is not, we're not experts on this, right? The town counselors, I mean, some people are better than others. John, you're, you're a good quiet guy. You know, that's not our job to be experts. It's our, our job to rely on advice from experts and make sure we follow a process that will lead us to just, just a good decision as a, as a board, as a, as a governing body. And to do that before we put it out to the voters and say, you guys figure it out. Because I know you probably can count the number of people on one hand who have actually read the financial, the Town Council financial policies. And it, believe me, and it's a very slow read.
So I, I, I'll take it, and Tom can correct me, but it's the voter's responsibility to make sure that they're informed to make a decision. And from my perspective, the only thing they need to be informed about is whether they want to expand the library or not. All the other details are, you know, the impact on your taxes, it's going to depend when you execute the project. So you got to get the authorization to do it first. And then at some point, you're going to, if they're approved, you're going to take it on. And you're going to, and then you're going to start fleshing it, what's the tax impact? How do I mitigate the tax impact?
That would not be my interpretation, sorry.
Well, that's, you said that and I shared mine, yes. That I think is the voter's responsibility to make sure that they're informed. That doesn't mean we won't provide them information. Now, the Council Communications Committee can choose to take that on, but I think, you know, the library is probably in the best position to, to take this from here, if it gets on the ballot, to take it from here. I don't think it's, I don't view it as my job to, to communicate that anyways. It's.
Yeah, I would say I, it's really, it's not appropriate for that sort of additional information to be on the ballot itself. It is permissible to have additional information in the ballot booths. And perhaps that's something that can be explored. I don't, I don't know that it needs to be part of this action. That's something I'll explore to see if that could be a subsequent action to council. In any event, I don't see it being my primary responsibility to educate, certainly on this matter. Having said that, I'll be a participant, I'll supply information, factual information to others that are preparing information to help educate voters. But I don't see it as, as town responsibility to advocate or certainly, or educate on this.
The Town Council financial policies are enforced by the town manager and the Finance Director. Okay, so they don't get anywhere unless they're enforced by you and your head of finance.
Okay, that is. We're not issuing bonds right now, Don. We are asking the voters if they support the project. Yeah. That, that, that's all. If, if, if they support it, then all that stuff's going to kick in. And, and those things are going to have to be done. In terms of what goes on the ballot, I, I tried to see if you could put the tax impact and it was highly, the financial statement is signed by the treasurer. It's not a political, half of it statute.
It's a statute.
Sure. My question wasn't speaking specifically to the ballot. My question was when constituent, concerned constituents email the council and say, can you tell me the impact to my tax bill? Whose responsibility is it to have done that calculation and to answer to that constituent?
I, I think the question is a false promise. So the, the impact on your tax rate is contingent on many factors. That it's not your, you can't answer that question. I, I can say that what we should be able to say is that this won't negatively impact your tax rate in one way or the other. When you start to take on larger projects that do trip some of those, you know, key metrics, then it will. But now I'm turning into a, this isn't my job, guys. Well, well, it's not mine. And, and it's the voters' job to make sure that they understand what they're voting on. But the end of the day, they just need to say if they want to expand the library or not. That's it. And if they do, then we need to figure out how to make it work.
I would expect the library trustees and staff will be interested in preparing all sorts of collateral information.
Right.
For which myself and staff, I expect will be involved to help supply factual information. But I, I don't see us leading that effort by any stretch.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move the question.
This is my zero dollar motion. Yeah, I'd like to move forward. I'm not going to withdraw it. So I'd like to vote on that.
You didn't get a second.
You didn't get a second.
We are, we are on the main motion. So I'm going to, sure, I'm going to call the vote, please. Thank you, Tony.
Counselor Slither?
No.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
No.
Counselor Katerina?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Kluge?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, my battery is about to die, just giving the answer.
Okay, yes. Ken, I, I know you had a prior commitment. Thank you for sticking with us for three hours and, and thank you all for staying as well. We have additional business to conduct, so if you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome. It's nine thirty now. Is everybody good to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, I called the questions.
I'm going to move to table it, but I, I don't know if I'll be supported, so. Where is? Why am I not, where's the MOU? Okay, well, we're not going to move with that. I think it, okay. But moving on to old business, order number twenty-two dash zero seven four, second reading on the new request for a marijuana license from the following business. Theo's Place located at one forty-eight Pleasant Hill Road for medical marijuana cultivation, tabled from the August seventeenth meeting. Liam, do you want to bring us up to date on this?
Yeah, just briefly, we tabled this. We didn't feel the applicant was ready for approval. We've since done a follow-up inspection with the fire inspector. We no longer have our reservations we recommend for approval.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Tony, would you call? You know what, we are now all present, so I will go ahead and, all those in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Order number twenty-two dash zero seven six is second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter three oh one, Town of Scarborough Administrative Code and adding Article thirteen, Department of Engineering and Technical Services. Liam, do you want to help with this one again?
Sure, this is, this has been before the council, I think, globally for a public hearing and a first read. This is essentially to establish what is currently a technical division and to its own standalone department underneath from, underneath planning. So this is beheaded by our town engineer and it's been vetted by the ordinance committee.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this? And can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion? All those in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to new business, I'm sorry. Order number twenty-two dash zero eight four is Act on the Name Posted to the Various Committees and Boards by the Appointments and Negotiations Committee on August seventeenth, two thousand and two. Counselor Ham?
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. This is a second notice for the following appointments. Community Services Advisory Board, appoint Amy Loder as second alternate to fill a term to expire twenty twenty-three. Scarborough Housing Alliance, appoint Robert NATO as a full voting member to fill a term to expire twenty twenty-three. And finally, Senior Advisory Board, appoint Constance Grant as a full voting member to fill a term to expire twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll take that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And discussion? All those in favor? And none opposed, it's unanimous. Moving on to new business, order number twenty-two dash zero eighty-five, first reading and refer to the Planning Board the proposed amendments to Chapter four oh five C, the Scarborough Shoreland Zoning Ordinance. And this is being brought forward by our zoning administrator who has patiently sat in the back of the room all night. Thank you for joining us.
Does the council move an introduction? I mean, I don't need to have you wait three hours for nothing.
Please.
Well, I'm not a library trustee. I'm Brian Longstaff. I'm the zoning administrator here in Scarborough. And thank you. You have a memo in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions, but just briefly, there's been a shortfall in the mandatory shoreline zoning ordinance that dealt with non-conforming structures. Non-conforming structures are structures that are closer than seventy-five feet to the resource, whichever that might be. The problem is that for those structures, they're limited in heights to twenty feet or the existing height of the structure. Many times those structures are also in a special flood hazard area. If you improve that structure in any way, that achieves a fifty percent of market value cost estimate in your construction, you're required to elevate the structure. The ordinance never, the, the, never contained any guidelines on what happens if you're already twenty feet high and you have to elevate by three to five feet with the impending new FEMA maps that we hope someday we'll have, hopefully next year. That left some people in limbo wondering, what do we do? Do we have to cut our roof off? Do we have to take a story off our house? We've been trying for three, three or four years now to address this issue, this shortfall. And with the help of Senator Stacy Brenner, we were able to get legislation passed this past year, which now allows the town to adopt language in its ordinance that says you can now, if you're a non-conforming structure and you must elevate to meet floodplain requirements, you can take the measurement of that twenty feet from the top of the foundation or, you know, and use your existing height of structure or twenty feet, whichever is greater. And that allows people relief in those situations where they didn't previously have it. So we have several folks along Shipwreck, along Jones Creek, in some other areas of town that are coastal floodplains that are going to be at some point, just to keep their structure up, they're going to be creating that situation of what's called substantial improvement, where they have to elevate their structure. This language will allow them to do that with a little more assurance that, you know, they're not going to have to take a, a story off their house. And it's only for non-conforming structures. If you're conforming, you don't get this relief because you can go up to thirty-five feet if you're conforming. So it shouldn't be an issue for those, those types of structures. So that's generally what it is. And there's also one other legislative change that deals with the requirement that the state adopted to, to have people submit photographs before and after their project. So the, the cost impact of these two changes is, one's going to be great in saving people money and the other doesn't really cost them much at all for digital photography. The changes in the ordinance, the amendments are in three places. Two of those places are in the definitions. There's one section in the administrative section and then one under non-conforming structures. And you've seen the red line in your packets. And that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
So this is remarkably complicated stuff and you just made it sound simple.
Did I, because I can't remember anything I just said.
You did well. And I believe you did it through the ordinance committee as well. This has been passed out of committee for us. Thank you. I guess, were there any questions for Brian? Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this? And do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is again, a referral to the Planning Board. And with that, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. My next is order number twenty-two dash zero eight six. Act on the Request to Authorize the Town Manager to Enter into a Memorandum of Understanding with the Library Board of Trustees. This was brought forward by the town manager. Would you like to introduce?
I would. I, I think I alluded to the fact that I, I believe that an MOU is really important at some point to make sure that there's clear understanding about.
I would. I, I think I alluded to the fact that I, I believe that an MOU is really important at some point to make sure that there's clear understanding about, uh, a number of things. Given a lot of the conversation in, interest and somewhat confusion around private fundraising and how it may come to play. Uh, I made certain, uh, I, I thought it's best to advance at least something that would hopefully provide some level of clarity and, and comfort to counselors. Um, uh, what the potential and proposed uses of that, those private funds would be. Uh, in addition, more, uh, to my level of interest, I want to make sure that there was, uh, a clear understanding that the, the town, particularly me, I think will be involved throughout their project. Uh, as a practical matter, I suspect the town will probably be signing the contract with the contractor, paying bills and such. And I think it's important for the council and certainly the public to know that, uh, should be approved of the polls. Uh, the money will be spent for the intended purpose. So, um, I still think this is important. It may need some additional work and I don't think time is of, an essence of the essence anymore. So, uh, you know, it may well be, uh, the best move to, to table a matter tonight for a little further touch up. Uh, I did kind of rush it together. And, but I do think it's something like this is very important, just so everyone understands, uh, going forward, what the expectations are.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this? Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion?
This motion was to table?
Uh, not yet. No, it's just, it's on the table now.
Okay.
So there has not been a table in motion, but I, I do think that I will offer one, but I'd like to allow for some discussion before. I do that.
Um, so if I may, I'd like to support that, uh, motion to, uh, to table.
Fair enough. Does anybody have any discussion?
I think, yeah, I think this needs a little bit more touch up and.
There's no discussion over table.
Right.
I, I didn't make a motion. We don't have a table. We're, we're in discussion.
We're in discussion for.
Okay.
Just in general, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I had concerns regarding the fundraising aspects and I think Tom just touched on it. Um, I'd like to spend time cleaning that up. I think if they're able and capable of raising more money that, um, as much of that as possible should be going down. To pay down the, the bond, but, um, and I think we need to structure some of that language a little bit more clear. Some feedback, right?
Good.
And I had some additional wording. I like the spirit of what was done by Bill Donovan and others to detail out, uh, certain activities around construction costs and project costs. And the use of private funds. I'd like to add a couple of things that I don't believe we ever got to. And that it could include additional work on funding and scope, including our work on a strategic capital plan. Getting a better handle on financial policies and how, you know, that. Uh, will work in terms of bonding this amount that was approved this evening. And also one thing that I don't think was ever done, I don't think we ever in earnest, um, try to put the community services and people and the library folks together. To find synergies and efficiencies and other cost reductions through coordinating programs and facility requirements to reduce overall costs. So. If the spirit is to try to reduce costs and use fundraising, you know, to, to bring the overall ticket down, I think that's something that still would be worthwhile. Finally, we talked, uh, you know, if Kevin Freeman were still here, I'd ask him to explain what value engineering is, but, uh. I, I think he can do that with, with Bill and also with. With Nancy, but I would like us to, um. Build on item number three that had to do with governance and oversight to include appointment of a clerk of the works. And utilize value engineering methodology to eliminate waste and duplication to reduce. Further, to further reduce project cost. So that, those are things I have in writing that I'd like to submit, you know, at the appropriate time, but. Hopefully those are things would be welcomed by the library as, uh, they move forward and try to get this thing approved in the polls. Might help and get some votes.
So I, I would suggest sending those to the town manager at any time.
Right.
And probably Counselor Anderson as well.
I will do that with dispatch. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Who is, if we were to table this, until what date would you want it to be tabled?
I would say one month. I'm not sure if we can turn it around sufficiently in two weeks, frankly.
I'd make a motion to table this for one month.
First meeting in October.
First meeting in October.
Okay. Motion is made. Second. And there's no discussion. Uh, Counselor Anderson. Why don't we take the role for this?
Counselor Snyder. Yes. Counselor Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Hamel.
Yes.
Counselor Caterina.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Oh, sorry, this is going.
Yes.
And Chairman Klutje.
Yes. So I, I probably could have done that one myself. Thank you, guys. Item ten is standing a special committee reports and liaison reports. Does anybody have anything to report out? And I, I guess I'll, I'll throw in item eleven, council member comments at the same time, if you have any comments to make.
Oh, hold on. I do have one. Uh, sorry. I always do that. Uh, Conservation Commission, I believe Randy Hogan sent, um, the. Letter, their submission, the joint submission from sustainability, um, and Conservation Commission to the council. And so I would like to request a non-action item at some point, um, for council to discuss, um, and maybe even invite them to. Come and speak to some of the things that they outline in their letter and just give them an opportunity for some council discussion on that.
Counselor, we're still in council comments, right? We are. A plan, a CIP plan workshop. Do we think that one of those will be forthcoming in the next couple of months? Or do we have plans for something like that? I'm staring down the finance chair.
Yeah.
Uh, if there's, it's the will of council or the will of the chair, then we can make it happen. Well, yeah, I, I guess I have a lot of questions. Maybe I'll just catch up with you on the side of it.
Sure. So I think, um, I'm having a snack. So I think, um, it's really like. Uh, I think that I definitely have energy for that. Um, and so whether it happens at the finance committee level or whether we try and pull something together and. Um, have that as a full council discussion, I definitely want to connect with you on that and see. Then I can circle back to John.
This is a little more focused, but I, I have been communicating with the, the school board, Shannon, the strong chair, and, and they are requesting more time with us. Uh, to, uh, further define their project and we're, I'm going to be soliciting some feedback from counselors on, you know, items they want to learn more about. Uh, we're working on putting that on the calendar now, but probably the November. Okay. No, thanks. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, guys. Have a great night. Congratulations, Nancy.